Saturday, November 18th. I am calling to order the special select board meeting for this day, which jointly with the finance committee. So I'll call this and order and then turn over to Chairman Trussell. Reminder, this is being recorded for and on air with South Lancaster, or sorry Sterling Lancaster Community Television. Roll call, Mr. Allison.
Here.
Mr. Kerrigan here. I have not heard back from Ms. Turner, and don't see her on the screen. So we will count her as not here for right now. And hopefully she'll join us in the quality of progress. Now I yield to the gentleman from Lancaster, which we all are.
I'd like to call to order the finance committee co-meeting with the budget, with the Board of Select. And do that by taking a roll call. Emily.
Here.
Stan.
Here.
Michelle.
Here.
And Jocelyn, are you on? Is Jocelyn on? She phoned in sick, so for now we'll say she's not present. I'd like to turn it back over to the Chairman of the Board of Select now.
Sir.
Dick Trussell is here.
Dick Trussell is here.
Is there?
So I will ask, there are a few folks online. One is iPhone 5, which is lovely. There's just another town of Lancaster. We're trying to figure out who that is. So if someone who is the other town of Lancaster can identify themselves or change their name, that would be helpful. If you can't do that, it would still be helpful.
They are co-hosts, so it's.
They are co-hosts?
Right. It's one of our computers. Is it the Owl?
No, the Owl is.
Kate's machine?
Kate's is Kate. The Owl is the Owl.
So we have two Zooms going, so it's probably that machine.
Well, fantastic. All right, so.
No, no, no. No, you're right.
They're figuring this out.
So there are two here, though.
I'm Kate.
She's Kate, which is right below that number five.
Both town of Lancasters are hosting co-hosts.
I know. I don't know who the co-host is. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So they're logging in with iPhone 5?
We're logging in with Town of Lancaster.
We do not. All right, so a quick preview of the meeting, just so. It's the budget preview meeting for fiscal year 2025. As we did last year, which was a huge success. Perfect, let the record reflect, Ms. Turner is present. So we did this last year, it was a huge success. It's an opportunity for department heads to come and. It's an opportunity for department heads to come and discuss their budget and for Kate and Cheryl to discuss the budget in whole with us, which I'm assuming we will start with a brief summary. But I'll run through what the schedule is right now. I want to tell folks watching at home or wherever you are on Zoom, that we reserve the right to compress the schedule if we get through a department quicker so that we're not here until two or three in the afternoon. Last year, I think we got out at around one-ish or something.
No.
What?
No.
No, we did, didn't we?
Yeah, 12:45 on Zoom.
12:45.
Really?
Yeah. You guys had such doomsday scenario in mind. We managed to tackle it. There we go.
I think it was two.
It was, I was, well, yeah, it was not two. Anyway. At 9:00 AM, we're going to meet with library folks. 9:45, Health and Human Services, 10:30 Public Safety. We will take a brief break. Then at 11:30 Planning, noon time Department of Public Works, 12:45 Finance Administration and Other. And then 1:45 will be Capital Review. And then there'll be a wrap up and adjournment after that. This, as we all know, is the result of months so far of work between Kate, Cheryl, and the department heads to develop baseline budgets and information for next year. Kate had some goals going into this budget season, as did we on the select board, and I know you all on the finance committee did. And so that is what this document that we're going to review, or these budgets that we're going to review, is based on. Kate and/or Cheryl, do you want to?
Okay, all right. So the overview here, a few things. Sorry, Kate Hodges, Town Administrator, and Cheryl Garibby, Finance Director. So we began working on this as Town Departments in July. I will say that last year, we started with the same timetable, and it was because I think it was very clear that we needed an operational override. I would say for future years, we probably don't need to start quite as early unless something different happens and we're having some kind of struggle. And reason being is because by the time we got things out to you, the very next day, these numbers are changing in our favor. But I think, just to put that in the back of your mind there, there will be some changes. So I guess what I'd like to offer is that what you're looking at today is the worst-case scenario, meaning that we budgeted high on things that we didn't quite know based on items or things that we had in the past. So even with that, the goal for my office and Cheryl's office was to come in with a budget that was as close to a $0 increase on the general fund, so municipal side expenses, as we possibly could. And that was where we started. And so what we did to get there, it was a little bit of a different process than last year. We used what's called zero-based budgeting. So we took every department's budget that we have some ebbs and flows and we started at zero. So instead of taking whatever there was last year and adding 2% or 3%, we said, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to do zero. And so the budget sheets that you will see reflect what we have as a level funded. So effectively, while the buckets that you have in, so let's take Public Works, for example. While personnel may have gone up, there would needed to be a corresponding decrease in the expenses in order to have it be the same number as it was proposed last year. Then we did a level service, and that was sort of not a wish list, but in order to meet or exceed the expectations both of the community and of whomever it is that's the supervisor, what do you need to do that resource-wise realistically? And oftentimes, that came in higher than, obviously, than the level funded. And then there's a TA approved, and that was through a series of internal meetings that we had with Cheryl and myself and Dawn Foster, our budget analyst. And going through line by line and saying, you know, you had X amount for this, but you historically have only used Y. Give me an understanding of how you came to this number. And oftentimes, we were able to, you know, whittle that down to a different number. And so all of that said, we are right now $2,221 under what we asked for last year. So while the schools, we're carrying the Nishoba at 4% based on their settled union contracts at 3.5, and we're carrying Minuteman at 3% based on the numbers that had come in over the last two years and the fact that the projections for the students next year are lower. And so we end up coming in with only the school as the only increase, which right now is somewhere in the neighborhood of $750,000?
$680,000.
$680,000. So as far as a change to the general tax, it'll stay pretty much the same, give or take. Understanding that we're doing our best, you know, with the resources that we have, and I guess solidifying the fact that the override that was proposed was truly necessary because what has happened is it stabilized our government as you see it now. The other thing that we did is we went through line by line the personnel that we have here and created a little bit more of efficiencies. What I can say is that for a number of years, and I understand this, it's a different way of thinking about it, but there was a number of persons that were hired to do one job, but instead of having 140-hour employee, there were two 20-hour employees, or they split it up between that. That is a policy decision. It's not one that I am very supportive of because, number one, job sharing creates less efficiency. Again, this is a policy, you know, an organizational policy. And number two, we end up paying more for that because while the persons are not getting benefits, there are some other things that are afforded to them, particularly in union contracts, which also cover part-time employees. And so the idea of taking, say, three part-time positions and blending them as one. I'm sorry, somebody's standing there trying to get in, but I don't see it. So and blending them into one position ends up creating an efficiency both in paid time off, insurances, and contributions to retirement. And then lastly, just through attrition, we have had some long-term, really wonderful employees retire. And so, of course, when someone retires, generally, they're at the top of the scale, particularly if they've been in the position for many years. And so the persons that come in are arguably not at the top of the scale, and that has shown some savings as well. So I think, you know, as far as where we are now and what you're seeing, Cheryl and I were doing backflips in our mind because we would have been injured to do them in real life. But, you know, I'm actually, I'm really proud of this budget. I think the department heads have worked really, really hard, and we spent a lot of time going over every single penny. So I know the library starts at nine, but if there's any questions generally?
The Owl is shut?
The Owl is shut? Yeah, what?
Mr. Chairman.
There it is. Yes.
Questions as we go here?
Yes. Was that just your question?
Yeah. Want to ask you, Cheryl, but.
Hold on. Sorry, there seems to be a. It's flashing red. Every time we try to watch.
Maybe battery, is it on?
Hey, Kendra, can you hear me?
She's the first to tell us if she can't.
Anything to turn on power?
Pardon?
Turn on power?
Yeah. It's going to kick all these people out.
No, doing the Owl is not going to.
Everyone thinks that's how you project it. That's why we have the schedule built as such. To have our legal problems. Owl will be here till nine.
Steve, were you able to get online? Was anybody else?
I am on.
I'm on, too. I don't know how that should.
I always have to worry. That's why I like to be watching. I printed paper for you.
At one point, you probably.
Let's quick, Kate, can you click that? Can you follow that?
Say.
I'm guessing we're okay?
Yeah.
We are back, according to Kendra. That's. That's your company.
I know, isn't it?
What, did you come in here with that talking point? Are we ready?
Just a quick, when I heard the retirement, which I knew that would be factoring in, obviously, to the budget. What kind of impact monetarily did that have on the retirees? Do you have any numbers on that?
It was minimal.
It was minimal?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, Stan, what was your, what was the question?
What impact monetarily were there as a result of the retirees going from one scale down to a lesser scale? Apparently minimal is the answer.
For the retirement fund, yes. Because that's built in, it's already built in.
So I don't want to jump the agenda. At what point do we talk about? No, no, I'm just saying, at what point do we talk about things like the retire refunding and risk management and that kind of thing?
In the administration.
Administrative finance. Thank you.
All right. Well, we have 13 minutes. Does anyone have any general questions before the library people arrive? Or, sorry, the library people arrive?
So last year, this meeting was very helpful.
Will be this year.
I know, I'm looking forward to it. But then questions came up afterwards. Can we consider or can we reconvene a meeting to go over questions? Not necessarily with the department heads unless they're needed, but to bounce off with the finance committee and ourselves.
You mean, can we have a future drive? Is it finance committees, that's the question?
Yeah. You have two scheduled.
Yeah, we already have some scheduled.
It's on the budget calendar? Okay. When's the next one? I don't think I have one. Do I have to?
Hi, Frank.
Hi, Frank. I gave you guys the calendar in the summer, so.
I have it somewhere.
Yeah, we have printing.
We're still.
Hmm? Say what?
We're still with the library.
Uh, shit, we're waiting for. Yes. Waiting for Joe Vila.
He's not here.
I'm just saying, we were anticipating his arrival.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I don't want to wait for someone who we know is not coming.
I thought you said a rewaiting.
I said a rewaiting.
Yeah, sorry. So I guess when I check back on that.
We're looking for the date. It was in the calendar you received.
I know, as I said.
So I'm doing the same thing you're doing. Well, you received it this summer.
But you received it in print.
You received it already.
I know, I know.
Print, so we're doing the same thing you're doing, which is looking through our records.
It was lovely coming through the lights this morning. Wasn't it? It was.
Are they fine operating?
Yes.
I was just saying, don't do it Friday.
They turned them on last night.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. I was coming home, and I noticed first time, yeah. Of course, it was a red light.
I can't tell you how many times in the morning I'd go to take a left, and the car is coming around, and someone would be in the right-hand turn, and then they just fly straight through. So I was a little.
I say everybody, don't do that. Tell everybody at home.
Yeah, don't do that. It don't need to be T-bone.
No.
For folks paying attention at home, we are just waiting until our library director arrives and we'll jump into the library. And for folks waiting in the room, sorry. Not. We're 9 o'clock, exactly. We just got our preliminary stuff done so quickly. And here it is.
Reports last year, last year's call includes the border health. Where are the.
Health and Human Services. Health and Human Services.
All the. 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 The.
Yep. I love. Yeah.
Now, you gave a news break on the record, subject to.
It's in that budget.
It's in the. The. The.
Yep.
Joe, don't go too far.
Joe.
Joe.
You're up.
Too far, you're up.
Oh. And early.
And early, yeah.
Have some fruit.
Yeah.
Where does it fit me to sit? What's that?
Ooh. I see. With nothing in front of me.
What are you talking about?
We used to say.
What a terrible. I got you, man.
It was hard when you just saw me stand right in the middle.
Even more.
I could feel crazy, and then take that table right in front of you.
That table was meant for everyone, just as also, which is why I invited you to have some.
Plenty of places to put my paper down and take notes.
Get through that.
Well, welcome to the members of the library trustees. Johnny, Kate.
Yeah, I'm going to share a speech. Host disabled. I am the host.
You are.
Can I read a statement?
Uh, yeah, sure. Yes.
Couple of things that are in my budget that I'd like to just draw your attention to. But before I do that.
So she's going to bring up her budget, so if you're going to do specific.
No, I'm not. I don't want to actually talk about the budget.
You're in the wrong meeting.
I really and sincerely wish to congratulate Cheryl and Kate. This budget process was a lot more streamlined for department heads. Last year was intense, but this year, the work was hard, but the environment we worked in was a lot more hopeful. So as recently as last department head meeting, Kate and Cheryl kind of explained to us their goals and objectives with this budget, and we were all pleased to hear that they were close to reaching them. I'm sure some of you know what Kate is trying to achieve this year. But the library's fiscal year 225 budget includes hiring a special collections and archives librarian to manage collections, provide outreach, give tours, install.
Can you hold on one second?
Oh, man, I just had.
I know. You are, I'm sorry. But something has gone on where another person accidentally was on Town of Lancaster, and so it won't let me share my screen. So if everybody can hear me, I have to dump out and jump back on to this meeting so I can edit it. So it's going to kick you all out.
My phone's over here.
Two of you. No, I'm just trying to pick up for an iPhone. And then.
This is mine, it's me.
See, and you're not even at your time yet, so.
Yeah, right.
This is the curse of going first.
But such anticipation now for the first meeting.
Well, Stan, nice to see you. For so much.
For the record, I got here at 7:30. He's home.
It always does, until humans get involved.
Saturday, you're still in bed, having your mimosa.
I wish, yeah. I love the starter, like.
We just, we stopped.
We have five hours. I mean, we.
Kate, if you'd like, you can still make it. I can help if that's beneficial.
We were supposed to be at nine.
Yes, we are. It's nine.
We were running way too ahead, so we thought we drew some.
It's page 51 for anyone.
No, but I think at the start of every agenda now, it says, if technical difficulties happen.
Dick, it's page 51.
Yeah, over the library.
The good news is that two people that were on.
Dick, are back on.
What's up?
And you got access.
We're missing Roy.
You're missing Roy, but he'll do that. Jason always counts.
Well, Roy was locked in this town of Lancaster.
Okay.
All right. Joe?
No, there's no number.
We just made Kendra tested.
Kendra, can you hear us? Kendra, can you hear?
It's 51 of 60, so it's probably towards the back, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Kendra, can you hear us? At least. God in play.
Kate, go ahead and talk again.
She can hear us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect statement.
Take it away.
Sorry.
Beginning of.
Apology, yeah.
Oh, okay, good. So the library's fiscal year 2025 budget submittal includes hiring a special collections archive librarian to manage our special collections, provide outreach, give tours, and install exhibits, as well as apply for grants to support these endeavors. The capital request also includes $17,000 to improve the museum.
Recording in progress.
It's okay. You don't have to start again. You're fine.
I'm glad that's not on the record.
Oh, it is.
And apply for grants to support these endeavors. The capital request also includes $17,000 to improve the museum and to begin the lengthy process of digitizing legacy documents that could be saved for posterity. The library possesses more than 1,200 objects, hundreds of volumes of manuscripts and manuscripts in the Lancaster genealogy, Civil War, and rare book collections. At the most, I have employed staff for up to six hours and the occasional tax abatement worker to handle delicate and sometimes rare objects in paper material. Volunteers and tax abatement workers cannot be accountable when things go wrong. However, professionals are responsible and have the skills and professional experiences to plan and avoid mistakes that could have impactful consequences on these materials. Residents are happy to live in Lancaster for many reasons. It's safe, has excellent school, a bucolic natural environment, and plenty of opportunities for recreation. The town invests to keep residents safe, to provide exceptional schools, to steward open space, forests, and wetlands, and the community center, where people of all ages attend programs, meet with friends, play pickleball, workout, or access health services. Why has investment in Lancaster's historical services lagged other fundamental and vital services? Is it time to advance access to our past and preserve for our future generations? I say yes, it is time to improve access to historical collections, provide outreach, give tours, install exhibits, and apply for grants to support these endeavors. Will investing in a historical service improve the quality of life in Lancaster? Or will it be business as usual? I say yes, it is, and hope all of you are persuaded today that this is the best time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you have anything to say on behalf of your members? You don't have to say anything.
I think it's clear that part of the reason access to our museum, which for years has been sporadically open for special displays or for hours only a couple of times a week, it's just astounding, just the stuff that's in that room. I just was working with Karen to put up a display using our paleolithic materials that we have, which are in a corner. And, you know, these things were made by the first, the first North Americans who, you know, lived in this continent 12,000 to 3,000 years ago. And some were found in Lancaster. So just to highlight that, you know, we talk about history. That's a lot of history. And it would be great, just anything you pick has so much depth and meaning and that having a professional will allow it to be much more available, much more information, all that data. So definitely, we support this.
I would just like to say, after having worked over at the library for so many years and seeing people come in specifically for historical information, or just having people drop in and being amazed at the library and wanting to go see everything, we were so limited by our limited amount of staff that we maybe didn't do as much as we could have if we had somebody committed to this. And you will find that people will be using this more and more because we saw it every day. So I agree with Emily and Joe, this is something we need.
Fantastic. Thank you. We'll be loving when everyone's in agreement.
Question on that. How will this, Joe, that you formed, work with the Historical Society?
Probably very little.
Commission.
But we will work a great deal with the Historical Commission.
I'm sorry.
We'll work a great deal with the Historical Commission. We already have pretty strong, we're developing pretty strong bonds right now. And I've always been of the mind that the town only benefits if we can coordinate our efforts.
No one's saying that, I just want to know how it's going to work.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm not saying all over the other, I'm saying.
No, no.
I really work in two separate units. And don't, I guess my question comes from, don't they own some things?
Oh, they own terrific things.
So how, how do we make it all work?
Well, depending on what the Historical Commission decides what it wants to do with its objects. I think whatever they decide, there's going to be great collaboration. Probably the staff person.
That's great.
The staff person that I'm thinking about would be interfacing with whoever's in charge with the Historical Commission.
Historical.
Commission.
And what about Historical Society?
That's not a town, that's not a.
It's not a town, I know it's not.
Let me just say this, I would want to engage with anybody who shares our mission. And there's no harm in it if they manage historical items. It's best if we all work together and install exhibits, for instance.
Well, where it's not part of the town, it has the town's interest at heart. If I want to make sure that we're not creating something that.
Well, no.
Yeah. I mean, we're glad to have an operational discussion about how they all work. We just want to have the conversation about the budget side of this and not how the operation.
We're happy to collaborate with anyone.
The Society is a five oh one C three organization. And so there needs to be some kind of MOU between our town entity, the trustees, for any type of partnership there.
Right, well, they need to follow nine nine new returns, short form, et cetera. All of these things come into play.
Not our.
Not our.
Not your concern.
Not our kettle of fish.
But it is a concern of the town as far as its historical equipments.
Right, sure, just as much as any other nonprofit in town who might have historic items would be a concern of anybody's. I think what you're hearing from Joe is the library will work with anybody with items of historical significance as long as we have the appropriate providence and agreements in place.
Yes.
Fantastic. Any other budget questions for Joe at the library?
Joe, is there any opportunity for something less than a full-time, if it came down to that?
Well, I've been thinking about this, Stan. And we had more or less a full-time children's librarian, and it was wonderful. And that person reduced their hours to part-time. And I felt at the time that it was worth it to keep that staff person even at a part-time position because they were so good. And in replace of those hours, we hired another part-time person. And in total, the town really didn't pay anymore, even though I would be netting more hours than I started with. So we started with thirty, and with two people, I had thirty-eight. So I had more hours, and the town was paying less, and really it didn't work. Because neither one of those staff members were able to have a continuity of a workflow that allowed them to sit and work multiple days a week, not just one day. Ideas formulate, the time to collaborate is going to be significant. If we're going to do outreach, if we're going to take it to the school, if we're going to exhibit collections. I don't think forty hours is enough, but I'm only asking for forty hours.
And that goes largely, that echoes largely what Cheryl and Kate earlier about part-time versus full-time job share, things like that, the efficiencies and.
I mean, also, Stan, we need to bring in volunteers. We need to bring in tax abatement people into this process. And who's going to supervise them, right? I certainly can't because otherwise we'd probably be on our way with bringing those folks in. So those people can't be alone in the room. The Historical Commission has done a fantastic job in what they do. But what they suffer from is being only open the morning of Tuesday. And people come in all the time. So access is about not having to schedule something, but just be able to walk in and receive service. And every time right now when people come in to reserve, have service, we're handing them our cards and say, write us an email and we'll try to fit you in somewhere. So there's no spontaneity. We need to prioritize this, Stan. If we're going to say that our history is so special and that we all love it and people should know it, if only they would, they would do something. And what I'm offering is it's our responsibility to bring it to people. Yes?
Yeah, we kind of have to make a choice, right? So we can't, history isn't free. So if we're going to choose to keep all of this history, we need a steward of that in the museum and somebody who can actually do that as full-time, or we don't have the capacity to maintain it. Because it takes up space, it takes up time, all of those things. So if we're going to do history, we got to go all in, in my opinion, as Joe was saying.
I want to just add to what you just said. The amount of space that we have in our public buildings that is devoted to this stuff, it's in three buildings. And if you went to those three buildings, you would be shocked of how much there is and how disorderly it is. And it's a real concern that some of that is very important to conserve for future generations and also to digitize so people don't even have to come into a department to look at that.
And that's the part, I mean, I'm in love with all of the parts of it, but the digitization, considering what we've seen in previous meetings presented by Kate and other, I believe you, Joe, the state of some documents at the Old Town Hall, like making sure this archivist can go through and work with the Historical Commission and then digitize folks, things so that folks all around the world can have access to the history that we have here in Lancaster, I think.
I don't know if you've heard, Stan, the story I shared, that there were some powerhouses before me, before there was the internet even, who sent indexes out to the universities. And those indexes included whatever was in our collections. And during my tenure, I got a call from somebody at the University of Pennsylvania and said, I need to come to your library, you have powder horns. And I said, how the heck do you know that? And of course, he mentioned how he did. He came in, looked at our powder horns, and when he was leaving, I said, did you find everything you were looking for? He said, no, I actually didn't, but what I found should be in the Smithsonian because it dates back to the revolution, it's got the name of the owner, Gersham flag. I mean, it's astounding what this town has, astounding. I mean, I didn't, and the best part is, is I'm learning every day. And, you know, the research Emily did, I don't have time to know that. So it's a matter of priority. You have collections taking up a lot of space and nobody's getting access to it. Not for a lack of want.
Any other questions for Joe?
I can set my clock to your.
Hi, I was going to say, everybody sit next.
Set my clock.
Thank you for the presentation, thank you for the support of your board, that's great, the board. So I was looking at, of course, the budgets breaking, broken down to personnel and. You alluded to, you spoke to, I noticed in fiscal year twenty-three.
Yep.
Two FTEs dedicated to youth services.
Yep.
Did I read that correctly?
Yep.
And now it's down to one point two. And you spoke to that a little bit. So my understanding is you had, from your discussions, something about maybe one and a half FTEs or something last year, just tell me a little bit about that. And, you know, the youth, we all, we all know that the youth is our building blocks, our foundation here and really needs attention. Is that, there seems to be a little bit of a shift here, and it's hard to balance with limited resources. But are you comfortable with, it looks like that reduction?
There's no reduction between twenty-four and twenty-five.
Well, actually, there's a.
Well, in that category.
An increase, actually. And for instance, we've hired a thirty-hour youth services librarian this year, and it didn't have any impact on our operating budget. So we didn't have to get more money, and hopefully in the new year, we're going to be able to open two more hours because of that.
Yeah, so you're allocated, I guess, one point two FTEs. And it looks like, if you look at the numbers on the back, but, okay. So that is sufficient to provide the services you want for the youth?
I like, I, yeah, I like where we are with that.
Okay. The other thing that I noticed is that is maybe shifted around in a different way, if you could explain that.
Sure.
Substitutes, it says substitute to FTE in this current budget, going to none?
Okay, so I've spoken to Kate and Cheryl about this FTE column because it ends with us having seven point two, but it's really about five point five. For instance, we don't, we don't include substitute hours as an FTE. It's used to fill in when people don't come. So we still have substitute hours in the budget. It's just reduced from ten thousand to seventy, seventy-seven five, seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. So we reduced it a little bit because with more staff, we'll have more coverage with people out.
Maybe Cheryl and Kate can explain to me better. So right now, for the current year, fiscal year twenty-four, you're showing.
Ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight.
He's talking, she's talking about the permanent staffing down the bottom.
I'm talking about the FTEs, you're showing eight point four FTEs. It says level funded six point two.
Because in the past, they used to count, they used to count the substitute hours as some kind of FTE, which it is not. It is not an FTE to have someone come in and work two hours out of two thousand eighty-eight in a year. And so what you're seeing here is the realistic seven point two, which doesn't account to the five and a half bodies, they don't have a half a body, but you understand. The five people.
They have one point five bodies.
So what we're trying to show is the actual staffing. But to change the FY twenty-four budget that was outlined to have it be zero doesn't help anybody because we want to be consistent with what was there. But the substitute shouldn't even be on there. Like, it's likely that FY twenty-six, should we all get to that point, will have that line deleted because that isn't a line that you would have FTEs with.
I was going to ask that same thing about the page.
It would be the same thing as if you, in DPW, if you have working out of class pay, right? So somebody who's a foreman is out, and so somebody who isn't a foreman receives an extra thirty cents an hour for taking on foreman duties. That's not an FTE, that's just filling in.
Okay.
So those, those numbers shouldn't count.
So it sounds like life being what it is, you're still going to need substitutes. You don't suggest that they be accorded as an FTE.
And so they are visible in the, in the details page where you can see that there's money similar to working out of classification pay that has seven thousand, seventy-five hundred dollars in it, which we'll get to at DPW. But we're not counting that as an FTE, it's already an existing person.
Okay, so where do we count for that in their, in their budget?
In the other page.
Page fifty-two, temporary, line five one two two.
Top chart, bottom line.
Temporary?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you. Because I know what you call them, okay. And so that's down.
Correct, which it would be because we're going to have an entirely new forty-hour FTE.
Okay.
So there's a corresponding decrease.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the proposal is, sorry, I didn't mean to jump the gun.
No, that's helpful. And could you just talk to, we always like decreases when we're talking budgets, but the decrease, which if, at fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and current, and the administrative assistant?
Which?
Five, ten, three.
So he went over that, that was a shared position.
No, that's the administrator.
That's the, right, the office manager or whatever.
There's only, there's only one.
No.
And so the terrible thing and the good thing about losing staff is you lose Janet Bayless at who's getting the top step, and you hire a fantastic person, Megan, who's at the bottom. So.
Which we've discussed, when people leave, we bring in people later.
So you get a cost savings, but you spend a year training.
Just making sure that we're providing the services in the budget.
Oh, yeah.
Sounds like, yes, it's just, we talked about that earlier, new people coming on.
Which I just want to point out, where these are, as Kate and Cheryl pointed out at the beginning, this is level services, and it shows an overall reduction of the budget of two thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars across the town. Some will have increases, some will have reductions, but the service level is at least level, if not a request for an increase with the ZARCA.
Yep.
I think it would be fair to say that the department staff, we've gone over this so many times that you can be assured that what's here represents what the department heads feel they need and are comfortable with for running their operation.
Yeah, this is the first time that we've really looked at it, talked about it, so it's just, you know, talk with them. I don't, I trust, trust you, I trust Joe, but we're speaking to everybody. You know, it's, it's everybody out there who will be voting and ourselves. The archive, the archive is what you've talked about in a previous presentation.
Yeah.
And now, sounds like a very valuable position. It is budgeted at sixty-one thousand and change.
That's going to go down. That's going to go down probably to, by eleven thousand.
Okay.
No, we cannot say that through the classification compensation study that.
I can't say that, so you need to.
I'm adhering. So yes, the budget proposal is for sixty-one thousand.
The budget proposal for sixty-one two should, should stay the way it is in order to attract and retain.
You know, and honestly, Kate told me that, and so I, I shouldn't have done that.
He knew not to say that.
I'm a rebel.
Twice that, twice now.
A librarian, that's a rebel.
Joe has been told, so this is time three.
No, I didn't trust you anyway. I think if you see sixty-one thousand, we're going to get sixty-one of their votes, right? So don't worry about it. What my.
Don't give away the store.
I'm not changing anything.
Okay. So listen, most of the previous presentation was focused on town records that are in the town hall.
By me?
The ones, no, the ones that we looked at, the pictures.
He's talking about last, last two months.
Oh, last.
Correct.
And from what I heard from your discussion and Steve's questions and so on, is, is your plan, just to set expectations, is your plan that the ZARCA vest is going to be able to digitize and work on those records? That's what I took from your comments.
I'm excited about the idea that when the town goes through those things, if there are things of historical significance that they're able to digitize, I don't, at least I didn't read it as this person's job is to digitize everything that the town has on a sheet of paper.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
What might surprise or even frustrate people is that there's way more than forty hours worth of work. And, well, because of the size of stuff, not because, by the nature of. But the thing is, is we're probably going to have to pull somebody who doesn't live in Lancaster. The training is going to take much longer than any other staff. So we're going to get off to a really slow start of a multi-year project to do exactly what you're saying, and that person, I would hope Kate, would choose to work on these other documents. So, yeah, I would, I'm all in on that. Yes?
I just, I want to make sure that our expectations and stuff are clear.
Yes. Yes.
On that one.
Did I say that right, Kate?
Close enough?
You are magnificent, sir.
A general question, which is, is this meeting about strictly finances or also like?
It's strictly finance.
It feels like we're kind of getting into department goals, which I don't think we should be discussing.
I, so I was going to, as we moved from this department to the next, I was going to remind folks that this will go a lot smoother if we focus on the budget aspects of this and not the operational goals or priorities for the next fiscal year.
We had talked about the cost of digitizing and preserving our documents, so this was all cost related.
I'm just saying, this, this person is to do with the things that Joe outlined. Part of it will include digitization, but we can't say that the retired.
I was just asking him just for clarification on that because it is a financial impact.
Right, but this is not financial impact, this is like the budget that's presented before us. Do we have questions on the budget presented before us?
Okay, that's budget.
Any other questions?
Yes.
On the budget presented before us?
Yes.
Okay.
I have.
Can we let her ask a question?
Sure, I can finish or you can go.
Repairs and maintenance, I'm assuming that move to the facilities?
Yes.
Repairs and maintenance, she asked to move to facilities.
So a hundred percent of the. So 100% of the $9,000 repairs and maintenance went to facilities?
No, not 100%.
Just the line items.
We're just not on that budget yet.
Oh, no, 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 okay. It was line item, line 5240 says repairs and maintenance, down 100%. So I'm assuming.
Well, you just said 100% went to, and that, that isn't true.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, thank you, that's helpful, that's helpful. I guess you can, so it was reallocated as you saw fit. We can get into those details.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in, yeah.
The, it looks like other things may have been consolidated and worked around. Trying to understand this, this part of the budget. Custodial and housekeeping also went down 25%. I don't know where it was reallocated to, but.
I believe we talked about this the last budget season, that a lot of those things were consolidated in custodial services a year in the last fiscal year, and so this is cleaning it up.
So, so will it be helpful for me to understand?
And we will discuss that when we get done.
But just so you know, it only went down $100.
Right, you gotta look at the overall dollar amount, not necessarily the percentages.
That's fine, I'm just trying to get out the questions as quickly as I can because I sense that there's not a mood to talk about something.
So I, I just, you wanna know, I'm trying to understand. You wanna know why it went down $100?
No, I don't wanna know that. I was trying to get to, it would be great if I could ask it, thank you. The, um, it looks like, and if you could just explain, and Kate, I know you're looking at the big picture, what's happening? I know that the library is very, kept very nicely and clean. Just, I'm sure this is gonna be the same with other departments. What's happening with repairs and maintenance and so on there?
Was there, I apologize if there was a question, I'm not sure what it was.
Repairs and maintenance, it looks like things went up and down in that column. So I'm assuming.
Up and?
Up and, so for example, repairs and maintenance.
Is zero. So I guess, what's the question?
I guess I'll pick it up probably when we get to repairs and maintenance. There was some things, repairs and maintenance line 5430 went up a whopping 46%, but that's only $250. So the numbers we're looking at is, are small. I just didn't know how.
I wanna look at the green column.
Yeah.
I am. So it was 216. Level services, 215, 216 is the recommend.
So it went up $50.
$69. I still, is there, what's the question? Why did it go up $69?
The question was, cause I'm sure this is true with all town buildings. It's just what is going on, what are we doing right? Looks like we're trying to consolidate everything.
I think what's getting missed here is we went back and looked at line by line by line and said, you haven't been spending this, do you really need this money? No. Oh, but this line, I've been spending more. I've been budgeting less. Can we take that movement? So what you're seeing is movement of money to cover reality, the actual expenditures.
In the zero base, that's why we use zero-based budgeting model for this year. So that, that's what you'll see. So the numbers that are small, 50, 100, even some are 200, 250, are a reallocation of resources to the areas that are needed most. And then some of that is a consolidation of resources so that instead of every building having $10,000, say, for maintenance, that the facilities department that's responsible for that has all of that money and therefore we don't have to carry as much. Because if they're going to be doing carpet cleaning in one building, they're gonna do them in all the buildings. So they don't have to mobilize. It's one contract, one bid.
It's a great idea, I completely agree with it. I'm not arguing, I was just trying to understand.
No, I know, but that, that's the answer to the question.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, relatives?
Library, one last one.
I assume this budget covers all of our need to get aid.
Yes.
Your certifications and stuff.
Yes, yes. We just got certified, actually, so. We received $20,000 last year and I think we'll get as much this year.
Well done. Only 20?
Yeah, well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, it's been great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Kate.
It's okay.
Am I allowed to say thank you?
You're still a better citizen.
Is that on script?
You're a scholar and a gentleman.
She's got a list for you next week, then.
Thanks, everybody. Does anyone need a break? We've got time for a break, or we can bring up Kelly. If anybody can still hear us at home. This will be broadcast on Sterling Lancaster Television because we're having a lot of, uh, non-case. I know, yeah. In case you didn't, because I know you guys are leaving. I want, anyone wants the rest of it, so many guys.
So tell them not to shortchange whoever we try to hire, please.
And tell everybody to support the budget. It just keeps going on and on.
It just keeps going on and off, and I don't know why.
He, uh, he's watching it.
All right, now everyone's got time before we start to go through the HHS budget. Come up with questions.
Excuse me, Mr. Cheryl. We may want to tell just every now and again, the people on Zoom that they may have a better opportunity for uninterrupted access.
Right, that's why I literally just said that as the library trustees were leaving, but I will say it again. So, uh, we are having technical difficulties. So if, uh, we're gonna continue the meeting regardless of the technical difficulties, but you can tune in to Sterling Lancaster Community Television and watch the whole thing live. So if you're having difficulties, fear not. You can look there or look at one of the many rebroadcasts of this fantastic program.
Okay.
Will you pull up HHS?
I sure did.
What an exciting time to be alive, isn't it?
It sure is.
As opposed to?
I don't, the other times.
Not being alive?
Did you get that scooter over there?
Oh, no, that's, yeah, sorry. I mean, is that really financial?
I got the milk on the rim at the same time. She wants it out of the.
The other item you donated had already gone out and is being used, so we're very thankful for that.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
Even with the cup holder, that was a nice cup holder.
It's like the Cadillac of the.
My father did not do things lightly. All right, we are back.
Caitlin's faces.
Did you not like the walker?
Want to take it home, person? Take it for a spin. I did.
A little storage thing in there? We use those Velcro ties when you folded it up to Velcro together. We, that thing went to Ireland.
International, yeah. It is travel. That's magnificent.
Health and Human Services operating budget.
All right, let's start us off here. So here with us today, Kelly Dolan, Director of Health and Human Services. You wanna introduce your team?
Absolutely, so I have my lovely team here. So we have Caitlin Roy, she is almost at her one-year mark right now. She's our social services coordinator. We also have Sam Zetecar here. She's amazing, and she is our Health and Human Services Administrator. So thank you guys for holding me here.
They are amazing. So one of the things that we are still looking at, of course, with the, this particular department being in its infancy, although a lot of the roles in it have been around for many, many years, is the idea of consolidating like actions, like resources. And so I think for this year, we, you will see, despite the fact that this says seven and seven, we actually have made some additional changes. And so what you'll see is a decrease in FTEs, but an increase in services, which is really sort of the goal for any zero-based budgeting. So here, again, we are moving to having our social services coordinator. Part of this is in line with our classification and compensation. Caitlin's position was an activities coordinator, I believe, initially. Caitlin is a licensed social worker. She has been doing an extraordinary amount of work that really is very technical, very specific to social services, advocacy for mental health, food insecurity, home insecurity. And so that really should be recognized both in the title and in the job description. And while programming is an important piece of that, that really has mostly been taken over by Sam. And I think through that, and you'll, you'll be able to see this in, in the budget narratives that come out before, the increase in the amount of foot traffic revenues, which I know is not the main purpose of Health and Human Services, but it certainly does help, rentals and, and other things that are there, and, and the amount of grant money that has come in is, is tremendous. And so I think the idea of keeping, you know, three core staff and then supplementing that with part-time or per diem folks that come in to teach a class or do some, something on the weekend or deal with rentals is really what we're, what we're looking at right now. And that's not to say that, you know, as, as things stabilize a little bit more, that we, you know, may not need additional persons. But what I can say is that the idea is that recreation, the recreation component, so not the Health and Human Services, but the rec component of that would be self-sustaining. So the ability to be able to have a program, people pay for that program and it pays for the expenses is, is the goal of that. And, and we were darn close this year. And, and I have to say, in, you know, it's sort of been a revolving door of things that have come and go over there. But in the first sort of year, year and a half of the department, just the, the amount of change that's been over there has been really significant. So that said, I'm gonna hand it over. Kelly, if there's anything you guys wanna bring in, and then folks can ask questions?
You guys, I think you did a great job encompassing that.
Oh, thanks.
We have a great 2024 lined up, so we're really excited about it. I'm happy to take questions.
Kate, you said that those two, but it all makes total sense. Are we looking for new numbers here or are we just basing this conversation off what's in the budget book?
So I can, see, now I promised Cheryl that we weren't gonna do this because it gets very confusing, but I think this one's significant enough that, let me give.
You're gonna change it on the sheet?
Well, I haven't.
You don't have to change it right the second.
I can change it on paper when we can do it after.
I changed it on paper last night. But I did tell you because you were gonna do that! I don't like your judgment.
It comes to figure with it, let her know.
She.
I warned you not to do it, I said, it's not a good idea.
Okay, for the record, it just says updated. Sorry, Cheryl.
So if we were looking at updated, if there were an updated number on personnel and expenses?
Hold on, you're gonna see it right now. Okay. Here's the update.
Okay.
So for here.
That's the.
Yep, so last year was 416, 665 was the total budget. It's now 364, 733, with a decrease of about 52,000.
So the binder, the books that we got, the binder we got, the number in column FY 25 recommend, just for those paying attention, was 402950, and now it is a reduction to 364, 733.
And again, I think this goes back to the fact that I know last year we had had it, that was for different reasons. As we move forward, it, it would be better to have the kind of the joint meeting likely after the first of the year, the calendar year. Because what you have right now has changes some. This one is pretty substantial. The rest are, you know, not as much, but, but it would make a difference and it makes a difference positively. So. So for here, we're going from having a halftime. So we have this here because this is for per diem, so they aren't, they aren't full-time. They're not benefit eligible, but they do constant, because they, they're not gonna be independent contractors, they do count towards the FTE. So we're carrying a half, but that is likely several people with, you know, however many hours. That would be a self-sustaining entity.
Kate, what line are you talking about? Item or position?
FTEs.
This is page 49.
Well, I don't have page numbers, so, but I've got the budget.
The FTEs.
Okay, so where's the halftime sort of?
Where the arrows.
Pointing to it?
Second one up, the one that's.
Health and Human.
Recreation Programming Administration.
Recreation Assistant?
No, one right above that. One where it's pointing up.
Well, I can't see from over here very well.
The Recreation Programming Administration.
Second from the bottom.
I must have an older version because I have Recreation Programming Administrator.
This is the version we have as the binder.
Oh, okay.
And she updated.
Mine is a Y that's going to a half.
Right, and ours is a total of a seven, that's going to 3.6, as she just explained.
Yes.
Okay, so the burial agent, we never technically accounted for that. That's something that's contracted, or it's obligated for MGL under the clerk's office. So we put a point one because despite the fact that there isn't an hour a week that's done to that, we need to have some marking for that. Technically, that is a Health and Human Services because it's through the Board of Health. But again, the MGL has that in the town clerk, so we wanna make a.
Someone's having a party.
Good. So then, and then the, the three ladies that you see here. So Health and Human Services Director, Kelly, Social Services Coordinator, Caitlin, and, and the HHS Assistant in Sam. So that's how we come with 3.6. And if you scroll, if I scroll, and you all go to page two, but no, because I'm not. Okay. This will show the breakdown of that. So we're going from 334 to 272, uh, 273, so a savings of 60. What we were able to do this year is we were able to put the programming amount that was back in there. So for many years, there was quite a bit of money that was allocated to free programming for seniors. And over time, that went away, and I understand why, and it was necessary because of budget. But with the savings that we have in personnel, we're able to put that back into free programming. And so that would, that's an additional 10,000, which is what leads to the overall 52,000 instead of 62,000 in there.
Fantastic. And the expense part, is that?
Yep, that was, that's what I put.
No, 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 I know, just scroll to the bottom of that so I can see the difference. So in our binders, again, those keeping track at home, the number was 81, but it went up by the 10,000 she just described, got it.
So the personnel, the, the number that's updated that you will have in the final book that we do, the personnel is down 60 and the expenses are up nine, not, well, not.
What, nine, 10, based on the book?
Landfill maintenance came down by $1,000. You'll be very happy.
In-state travel, that's quite a line item. Why bother? Get you to Wisterin back, 40 dollars.
That is where, it's associated with conferences, or conferences and trainings. We carry it separately because we use the IRS's number. We don't, I mean, it is insignificant, but we do it for every budget because it's technically not a conference or training expense. So, yeah.
It's a how you get to the conference or training expense. All right, any questions about the budget proposed? Mr. Allen?
I don't know how you do it. I mean, the amount of programming, I think, that we've seen and the work that's been done there has been, you know, significant. So thank you all for that. I'm assuming that the goal is to continue to build on that momentum and go flying into the future because I can see the engagement from town. And it's definitely an area that deserves an investment, so if that's what you're all comfortable with.
Thank you, absolutely. I gotta give it to my team to some regards to that. We're only a year old, as, as Kate mentioned. Everybody pretty much knows that around this table. But in one year, we also are astounded by what we've been able to do. But it, it really does take, you know, constant communication. We check in daily. I know we're a small team, but our, our numbers are value and our morals and ethics are all there to hopefully build on. And like I said, we're gonna make 2024 an even better year for the town. Thank you.
Kate, just a little background too. I'm just picking up on the veterans' bed and the very last item on here too. And I note that it says partially reimbursed.
very last item on here too. And I note that it says partially reimbursed. Is that the partial, after the partial reimbursement? Or is that before?
Before. This is before.
It's before. Okay. That's a gross number, not a net.
Correct.
Because they're a year behind, so.
Yeah, so it goes into the general fund when it comes.
What's the total position? That shared with, is it Leventer?
Well, it's funny that you say that, because Kelly, Kelly has been working very hard to establish our own district, because what was happening is we were paying somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000, and the veterans agent was working...
He's here four and a half hours a week.
Four and a half hours a week. And so we are looking to develop our own district, which Kelly has been in touch with the state, to separate from Clinton and Sterling, sorry, Sterling and Leventer. And so we are hoping to have somebody for 20 hours a week. And that, that way, you know, we'll have some. So this budget doesn't realize that yet, although the difference wouldn't be monetarily any different. It would just be that we're getting more than four and a half hours.
This is not the first time that veterans has come into play since going back when I began this terror attack. And it's, it's good. You're thinking about it and potentially making some changes that'll benefit the town and some savings.
Absolutely.
Can you tell me how many more veterans you've picked up?
Yeah, so we have, just shy of 300 in town. We have 298. And in the last year, Rick has probably seen about an added 30 new veterans in town. But like to Kate's point and what we're looking to do, we actually just got word yesterday, so I'm really excited. So we'll start this process effective next week about both towns approving for us to go to a district of one. Bringing someone in, we're looking to do more outreach essentially. We're now being concentrated, obviously, here in Lancaster, doing a little bit more events for people to come here and know more about our veterans services.
More reactive than proactive now?
Essentially, yeah. We want to be really proactive though, in the sense of, you know, basically awareness of the services that are available. But also, again, I was having somebody here who's on the off-hours, someone who could be here in the evenings for those who are still working at eight to four, nine to five, and a weekend Saturday hours as well. So I think just through hours alone, it'll allow someone to come in here and actually receive those services. Because currently, our person who's here is only here Tuesdays until noon time. So it's...
It's happening this year without a next-year project?
FY20, well, I mean, I would think by the time we're done, we'd be darned close to the end of this fiscal year. So FY25 would be the official start. But if there's a crossover of a couple of months, it's still budget neutral.
Yeah.
Just program positive.
Love that phrase.
I know, that was very...
Program.
Like a prophet over there. Someone make a shirt out of that!
That's our next t-shirt. All right. Any questions on this side? Any questions over there?
Thank you.
Dick first, Alex second, or Alex first, Dick second? Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Perfect. Alex, take it away.
Thank you for your good work, obviously. Near and dear to my heart. So some of these are going to be sort of cake questions. The Board of Health Burial Agent, Kate, you talked about?
Yep. I'm sorry, say it again.
That's okay. The Board of Health Burial Agent, you're accounting for it here as, in the updated one, is point one, even though it's in the town clerk, actually does the work, right?
So it's an expense, it's an expense that the MGL has as a Board of Health expense. However, the MGL has the town clerk listed.
Doing the work.
So because the expense is a Board of Health expense, that's why we're carrying it here.
Mass General law, for those paying attention.
I'm sorry. Yes.
The town clerk actually is going to continue doing the sheet function. That's required. Right. Now, we had a recreation director, Kevin Retrano, and then I gather we hired somebody else that we haven't met yet. So is that, is that...
No, we're streamlining those together, similar to what I had said.
You just went through, you just talked about all the staffing?
No, I know we talked about the staffing. I was just looking at the fiscal year '24, we had a recreation director budgeted for, correct?
Right. We've changed that around, so that we're going to have several per diem.
Okay.
That's what I was just saying.
No, I understood. It was just not making, I didn't, I understand where you want to go. I just didn't understand how it related to this. So we're eliminating the director and making, and streamlining it with the program administrator?
Mm-hmm.
An assistant?
Correct.
Okay. That wasn't, sorry, that wasn't clear in my, in my head. But I got it. All right.
Stan, pass something, while you're...
Just a quick, but landfill maintenance, does that include solar array maintenance?
No, that's separate, but we can get, we will get to that.
And what does that get under? What budget is that under?
Facility.
What else?
Landfill?
Oh, the land, no, she's talking about solar.
The solar array.
Well, the solar array is not part of the budget because it's...
Oh, it's an enterprise. It will be part of the enterprise budget, so we put it here.
Is that squared away as far as?
Yes.
Yes.
It's going to continue to work?
We're good to go.
That's refreshing. Thank you.
Just follow up on that, it says...
Enlightening?
Oh, don't.
Get it? Come on, that's funny!
Solar.
All right.
If you have to explain it, it's not funny!
Well, I was trying to explain that to you!
Following up on Stan's question, the landfill, I thought was, used to be DPW, but now we're outsourcing that, I gather, in this?
It's, as far as I know, always been a Board of Health expense, for the last decade.
Yes.
I mean, what if it was, what if it was DPW?
Remember we bought them a mower to do it and everything else? I know, just a question, it's just as long as it gets done, because there was some concerns about that.
So this is, this is the DEP order?
Needs.
Needs, not mowing. That's totally different. This is to care for the environmental components of the closing of the landfill.
The testing, all right.
Right. Not the maintenance.
Okay. So the maintenance would, because it says landfill maintenance, but that's actually...
The maintenance for the health portion, for the Board of Health's requirement.
So it's behind the solar field, it's not the solar?
Some agreement on, well, it's off-subject. I'll wait till we get to that subject.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
So Nishoba dropped hospice and so on, but nursing is still here as Caitlin? How did that change? It looks like the numbers remain static, but what?
So they outsourced, so they just closed that avenue, but they're working with other, they informed anyone who was on their care and working with a different agent, agency, just not through Nishoba Board of Health. But they informed...
So a VNA can be provided, so they were essentially operating that component as a VNA.
Correct.
And so there are multiple VNA agencies in the area that are all Medicare-approved. And so that was just one very small piece of what huge services they provide to the community. And that was kind of their private pay entity, but all of their public services are still accessible.
So that is what you're essentially saying, because the numbers remain fairly static for nursing. It didn't go down or up. So they're just...
Because we're receiving the same level of service.
Well, they, yeah, the hospice is outsourced before or after, I think, just outsourcing to the...
Yeah.
Still the same level of service.
Yeah, it's not impacting this budget. Right.
Not at all. They were private.
Any other budget-related questions for HHS? Dick, you said you didn't have...
Given the tax situation of the previous year, maybe as a percent of no land costs, how much has the request for aid increased at this point?
So, for example, I actually was just talking about this at the Friends meeting yesterday. So we've seen about 37 new folks come in this past season. And it's, but it's for all forms of assistance. So I expect that might continue to increase, obviously, over the course of the next maybe five, six months. But nowhere near what I was expecting in the beginning. But we are offering, as you know, we've kind of been chatting a little bit, we are offering a lot of financial aid services and awareness outside of what we've normally been doing, including, but not limited to, some financial awareness, like financial literacy courses, is what we're calling it right now, on top of our elder education services. So it's for anyone and everyone, but we're really trying to make sure we populate our 60-plus community with that.
So we're using MLSE and wheat and...
Absolutely, yep. And Workers Credit Union's been one of our new, like, recent partners who's been coming in and doing some work with that too, and a few other.
But you haven't, you haven't been overwhelmed, but you have had some increases.
Yeah, we've definitely, oh, we've actually had an increase without a doubt since May. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Those are your increases.
Yeah, there you go. See?
So this is what you'll see on the narrative sheets. But these are the total signings. So they've had more than 450 unique registrations. The services that are provided...
600.
This is just within the last year, just so you know.
Well, this is...
Actually, it's only nine months.
Well, not yet, and thank you.
Nine months, over 600.
This information will be important as the fairness committee works its way through.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So that's why I'm trying to get that picture.
Yep. We meet actually with two of the representatives from that on Tuesday to speak about these items. So I'm sure you'll see a lot of me at that one, or myself, or Caitlin.
My only point is, I love that, thank you for using the digital signage on the heat assistance piece.
Thank you.
That's, I was really impressed to see that. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Any other budget-related questions?
Yes. The water for the splash pad, $2,500. I guess that's under there because that's under the rec umbrella? Is that why that belongs in there? Okay. And to that, so just to be consistent, how about the expenses for the beach?
Those are going to be in the enterprise budget. It's not a general fund expense.
Okay, okay.
So I talked about recreation being level-funded. That's because it's a revolving account for special revenue, depending.
So water for splash, wouldn't, doesn't go in there because it's...
The town pays for the water for splash. We don't charge people to use it.
To get wet. Last year at the beach, I don't need to charge.
So general fund expenses are what you see here, but program expenses are not. A beach is a program.
Yes. Okay.
Fantastic. Any other questions? Jason has seated his rights. Also has told me before he left, he didn't have any questions. So thank you, Andrew Jess. Thank you, thank you. I can't believe it's almost a year. That's unbelievable.
Thanks so much. Thanks.
Thank you. And Emily pledges to get you that scooter.
Yes. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Everyone want to...
The band is back together with Kate and the Chiefs.
Kate and the Chiefs. Back, and the Chiefs are 37 minutes early, and we love it. We're here for all of it. If anyone needs a bio break or something, we can, we'll start with the Chiefs in a minute or two.
Do you want to start with dispatch, animal control, police, or fire?
Dealer's choice.
The three of them all sit in the seat itself.
Then why don't we start with numbers? Whatever...
Police it is!
Police.
Huzzah!
Mike loves to wait for his meeting time.
I will find out right now. Stand by, please.
Trying to scroll on my phone, it's like...
Police operating budget is on page 58.
58.
Okay.
Right at the very end.
Pardon me, sir.
I didn't even say that.
I was thinking I was going to say that.
Or you can even set that right there.
That's okay.
This is my first piece.
Spelling was not my best.
You have to spell it.
We have to check this.
Couple pieces of...
Don't post it.
Can't, can't...
Say that.
Is your blood sugar okay? Blood sugar going to be okay?
Save your drink.
Blood sugar going to be okay?
No worries.
All right, brother, partner?
No, I'm fine.
I'm worried, I'm worried for both of us.
Well, it's going to be fine now. Thank you for your concern.
Concerns.
SC, yep. SC.
What a wonderful day.
It's almost the same, right?
Uh-oh.
Now that I've had a skull.
So this is the new two, two, two.
Now you know how to scope. Yep. I've gone 15 years without one.
This is the new two, 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 two.
Yes, but I think, just don't say that yet, because I'm, there's two changes that we didn't have in there.
Does the skull jump?
Are we lower than that? Wow. All right.
Please.
I mean, let's, nope. Chief Moody, welcome. It's page 58.
I'm going the wrong way.
Yeah, almost right at the end.
Page 58.
Open the church.
It's actually 57.
Open your missilet.
Not mine.
All righty.
Just open on the video. No, mine's 57.
57. 57 and 58.
Oh, okay. Mine just says 58.
I'm going to ask you a question.
I got notes.
This one here?
Yep, almost.
But not even wise. 7 to me is the fire department, 58 is the police.
If I had that kind of energy, I'd love to be able to eat like that.
Page a long way.
I have an extra page.
I'd just like to start off by thanking the members that are here today for your time and attention. And before we review the police department's budget, I would just like to share some insight on the department and staff and concerns facing our future. Currently, the Lancaster Police Department has three sergeants, one detective, six patrol officers, and two reserve officers and myself. Together, we provide 24/7, 365 coverage. This is the same level of staffing that we've had for the last two years and less than we've had years prior. I believe it's important to highlight that before we get started. We all recognize and understand the strain on our residents as taxes continue to rise. We, as municipal leaders, have been asked to review our budgets and request only the expenses necessary to maintain our current level of service. This is not as easy as it would seem. As our community grows, so does call volume and the need for budgetary expenses. The challenge of providing town-wide zero-increase budget and factoring in inflation, uncontrolled increases in material costs, and contractual obligations means doing more tomorrow than with what we have today. As you see before you, our police department's budget does include a request for an increase, specifically the re-establishment of lieutenant's position. This is not a new position. It is one that I had in the past. It was during my time as a lieutenant when I was first introduced to the principles of management and began to understand the budgetary process. It is that understanding that gives me the confidence to stand behind the budget before you today. The issues facing policing statewide are the same that we have here in Lancaster. In the upcoming five years, we will have two officers forced into retirement, and another will become eligible. If Lancaster does not prepare and catch up on industry standards, we will have a very hard time recruiting and retaining officers.
That's my question.
The budget before you is creative and allows for department growth that is necessary as we begin to prepare for the challenging times and replacements ahead. This request includes funding for lieutenant's position at just over $105,000. But the increase is not for the full amount. This was made possible through the promotional process itself because Lancaster plans to use one of our existing officers to fulfill the lieutenant's position. This will open a vacancy somewhere else in the department. Currently, we are still under civil service, which means the promotion could come from the rank of sergeant or patrol. And the time needed to follow the civil service procedures to fill either of those positions will offset the full request. I can't tell you exactly how long that will take, but I'm confident that it will subsidize 50% of the overall lieutenant request. Another reduction you see is in the overtime budget. Some of this is a direct result of lieutenant position being salary, making that officer ineligible for department-funded overtime. Other overtime funding will come from grant services. As we raise the level of training of our officers, we expand the opportunities to receive such funding. It's this creative funding that I believe, with this creative funding, I believe we can reduce our overtime budget while increasing services. Other funding that we receive is grant funding. Some of it was, it will be used for traffic control. Some of you may have read, we just received a grant for just under $50,000 from the state. That's going to be used to fulfill one in-car computer, and each of the station workstations within the department will get new computers at no cost to the residents. All of the other increases, I'm happy to go over line by line, but they're consistent with either grade and step increases or contractual obligations.
I, first of all, thank you. And thank the members of the department for the work you all do. You have been discussing the lieutenant position for a while, and so this is not news. And it's been in our binder for a bit. My question is not relative to that, just, and I think I know the answer to it, but I want to ask it anyway because there's a $2,000 reduction in body cameras. I'm assuming it's because we're, we were scaling up, or, and we have them, and we just need a lower number, or?
So the body camera was a one-time negotiated price. It was a stipend given to the officers as part of the union agreement in preparing for them. As you can see, I'm wearing one today.
Didn't, I actually did not say.
We are...
Well, that'll help us because the owl's not working.
So we, the grant that we just received is the Edward Bryan Memorial Grant. That was similar to the grant. It's actually the exact grant that we used to purchase these cameras. This program is three years in the making. This was a $50,000 grant in which we were able to outfit... This was a fifty thousand dollar grant in which we were able to outfit each officer with a body camera. We negotiated the stipend, which was a one-time five hundred dollar payment per officer, and there was a three-month training window. So, we are halfway through that training window. We are set to go live with the full program January first, and these, these are absolutely fantastic.
And that just assumes one new, is that for the new lieutenant position? Assuming, is that where we have the, it's just, there's five hundred stipend per?
So, that five hundred dollars is an annual stipend. Just the five hundred is an annual stipend for the officer who is assigned to do all of the public records requests.
Oh, God, perfect. Fantastic. Thank you. Okay. That cleared it up? Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
You, you mentioned it, and I apologize for my hearing, but under personnel, under lieutenant, we have zero, but in the budget, we have a hundred and five thousand dollars. Could you explain again how that happened?
So, let me, so maybe I can clarify. So, if you go to the next sheet, which is actually page fifty-eight, it is included in there. I honestly just think, you're referring to where it says level services, there's one lieutenant, and then recommended, there's zero. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, so I saw that as well. It is included in the budget. I think that was just a clerical.
We just fixed it. It was a clerical.
Just a clerical.
So, it's a question here.
So, it is a, I asked that, yeah.
I wonder, did one of them demand for a hundred and five thousand dollars for a woman?
Yeah, I guess I want to talk about the budget a little bit.
You're in the right meeting.
Fantastic. I'm not really gonna talk to you, chief. I'm gonna talk to everybody else. I think it's too small. I know maybe not everyone wants to hear that. I want to share a quick story. I'll try not to be long, Mr. Chair, but I was, I was visiting family in upstate Newark, and I came across a scene that required police attention. Right there, it was a, y'all welcome to ask me about it offline. I'm not gonna go into the details. But I called local police, and it went to voicemail. And then I called nine-one-one, and it took the police about thirty minutes to get there. And it was just me, and that, well, not just me, but, you know, we had those discussions prior to the override. You know, we talked about what would it look like? Well, I saw what it looked like, and it was scary. So, you know, when it comes to this budget, I think we need to not just focus on the, on the red and the green, but focus on what is our, our long-term budget perspectives. So, specific to the lieutenant position, it's a must-have. As much as we would love Everett to be here forever, he's not going to be here forever, and this town must consider, must consider its continuity plan, and, and lieutenant position is that, so we must invest in that for our future. And when it comes to retention, Lancaster is not the highest-paid police force in the state. I don't know if that's news to everybody.
Well, it might now be news to the members of our police force, so keep it down.
But I, I, I realize that it's, everyone wants to focus on reducing cost, but it's not just about budget line items. It is what about the future of Lancaster looks like, and I've seen what it could look like, and we don't want that. I know we don't want that. So, as we go through this, we should definitely scrutinize dollars and cents, but when it comes to the investment in our police force, I think it's something that we need to think broadly about, not just gradually about. Thank you.
As we've said many times, a budget is a values document, and I share your sentiment.
Kind of building off that a little bit, my question is, well, one, just out of curiosity, this isn't really budget, but how many officers do you typically have on per shift?
So, we run two officers twenty-four-seven during daytime with myself and the detective there. There can be as many as four. Day, day shift, the reason why there's, there's a larger portion of officers spent there is we have officers who are assigned in court or assigned to deal with the public, they're in schools. Our goal is to have two officers twenty-four-seven available to respond to calls.
Okay. And then my other question is, there's no, or at least to my understanding, there's no assigned Lancaster school resource officer currently?
There is, there is not one.
Is that a budgetary?
So, so part of it is by design because, because the high school is in Bolton, and we do have a school resource officer assigned over there. We, we take advantage of, of that opportunity. The other is the detective position has always been kind of a hybrid position, a catch-all, where they do a lot of the community service work. They, they're in plainclothes, so it's more comfortable for them to go into the school environment, meet the kids. They seem more well-received, so it's always been a hybrid position. Future goal will be to, to get a, a school resource officer
Yeah.
For, for the town, just for our district.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mrs. Natara?
No.
I have no related budget question.
Unrelated to the budget?
It's real quick. How are the new traffic lights working?
Well, they just went-
Just one day.
Last night, but I can tell you the feedback that we received on fiscal page has been-
Too soon.
Yeah, people, people have absolutely, they've been, they've been waiting for it. Obviously, the anticipation has grown during the two-year process, and then having them blinking as a teaser for two weeks just, just kept everyone in suspense. But we're confident that, that they're going to facilitate a much safer, smoother downtown.
Absolute thing.
Sorry, George.
It's quite all right. Ah, it's a, it's a-
Yeah, okay. You got it.
That was good. Any other budget-related questions for the chief? Budget-related questions? Or apparently traffic-related questions?
Well, there was all kinds of-
He has permission to ask a non-budgetly question.
But believe it or not, you try to keep it budget, right? Um, so first, thank you. You know, really, I know this is, you've worked hard to produce a very efficient budget, and it shows, and efficient services. And I wouldn't say, no, there's been some discussion about whoever, people don't support the budget or costs want less money. I don't think that's not my observation of people I've spoken to in Lancaster. It's, I think most people, I think the override spoke to that, too, really value and are willing to pay for it, among other things. So, the, I think it's a typo. It says permanent staffing. It counts into the FTEs because there was fourteen FTEs and twenty recommended, but the matron, because it says, matrons, it says two. Maybe it's two people, but it sounds like that substitute one maybe we're talking about because matrons on the budget line, um, five-twelve, five-eleven-
Dash four.
Dash four says five hundred dollars, so, um-
Yeah, we, we, we fixed it on the other one. Again, you don't have, yep.
Okay.
You'll see that. And, and just on that, that's why the lieutenant also says zero, but it's a one. Should be a one.
All right, thank you. And you look like fiscal year twenty-three, you spent a hundred and eight on overtime, and then a hundred and sixty, and now we're looking at a recommended of a hundred and forty, which is impressive since wages have gone up a bit. How, are you able to bring it, are you able to manage at that reduced number?
Just let me see if I can answer it. That's, that is assuming the lieutenant-
Yes.
Is going to, um-
Yeah, I figured it was.
Yes, so that's, that's part of it. Again, you know, as we continue to understand the power of grant writing, we continue to expand upon them. So, one of the grants that we received specifically for traffic control was for twenty thousand dollars. We can spend fifty percent of that on equipment. The other fifty can be for patrol-related overtime. So, what we, what we're trying to do in being as fiscally responsible as possible is to write as many grants that give us refundable access to our overtime.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. Let's move to the second question.
No, I know.
And the differential, just what we're talking about, that's actually staying about level, the people working out of-
Yep, great.
Okay. And the reserve officers, because we talked about reserve officers. You mentioned them in your introduction, that you had two reserve officers? That there's nothing budgeted?
There is not. It's the budget or funding from them comes out of the overtime line item because the, the premises that reserve officers, they don't work full-time. They don't have a scheduled shift. They are afforded the opportunity after the union full-timers have passed on a shift. So, the funding, which is great for us, comes out of the overtime at less than the cost of one point five federal labor standard rate for overtime.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions for the police chief about the police actual budget?
Is there any anticipatory need for the new construction in North Lancaster? I don't, I don't mean the seven oh two. I mean the six ninety-six and five eighty, those two warehouses, et cetera.
Uh, not, not above or beyond what we currently have.
Traffic wise, probably have no, no impact.
So, we'll, we'll continue to look at the, the studies that come out and gauge the impact, but I don't foresee any-
But it was considered when you did this.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chief, I think we are done with your, that one of your presentations.
I love it.
Now roll on to your next.
All right.
And just tell us which one it is so we can find it in our-
Tell me which one it is.
Page?
Animal control.
Animal control.
Oh, no, where are we going for this?
Animal control. Page fifty-three in your hymnals.
You're in your hymnals.
I did. Take it one.
So, the animal control budget, I believe, is gonna be the same as it has been for the last two years. And this is, this is something that we've newly started working with at the police department. We've been, been checking other resources, reaching out to other communities, and it seems that, that this is the wave of the future, is having animal control associated with the police department. One of the benefits of doing that is we have a dispatch center who handles all of the public safety calls. That's where ninety percent of the calls are going anyway. So, having them come under our umbrella allows us to put them into our digital database. Therefore, we can track call volume, we can, we're able to follow up, and we're also able to have twenty-four-seven access to those reports to get to the public. So, it's, it's gonna really increase the value of the position without having to increase any monies associated with it.
Sure. I see an actual reduction of three hundred dollars under dog licenses. I'm assuming that's covered under town clerk. And what?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe, where does dog licenses go?
I just, eh, town clerk.
Where'd it go?
Town clerk.
Town clerk.
Town clerk, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 I know, and it's, it's an echoey room. Sorry, yeah. Town clerk.
And so that, and that expense was just to physically buy the cats?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so the, the process now, somebody comes in, they have to produce a rabies certificate to the town clerk. The town clerk validates that, and then it's-
I'm just surprised it was under that before because it's always, we've done that way forever.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the, it's one of the things that I'm hoping to, to change because right now, the animal control reports to an animal control commission for some things, to the select board for others. Works with the Board of Health for rabies, vaccination type stuff, and also the town clerk for, for licensing. So, there's really no clear direction on it, so I think if, if we're able to bring that in under the direction of the police department, we can at least articulate and know who's doing what and provide a better service to the community.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions for the chief about animal control? All right. Number three.
Give me a second.
Okay, we moved to that one so fast.
Regional dispatch. Okay, hold on. Give me the, uh-
Dispatch. All right, everybody, let me look up our pages.
Fifty-nine.
Oh, look. Look at you. Getting ahead of me.
He's trying to be Gen Z-er, isn't he? The only thing is I need the millennia. I need a magnifier.
Next classes, yeah.
I need a expanding screen.
So, as great as what you have is, it is incorrect, so if you could refer to the screen, because, whoop, sorry.
Yeah, I can see that pretty well without even a glass.
Reminder to anybody watching at home, this thing is legit, so if you want to turn it into Sterling Lancaster Community Television, you can watch it all live there.
You can.
Cheryl just went to the meeting. We, the regional dispatch has taken on Foxborough officially. That was approved at their town meeting and through their select board, and so that brings our assessment down thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Well, they need to take some more other towns.
Is that reflected in your two thousand dollars?
No, it's not.
We, we're gonna have an updated number by the end of the meeting, Dick. It's like a mother's telephone.
Yes, so, so no, that's not reflected, nor-
So, the difference is between fifteen and thirty-seven.
Yeah, twenty-two, yeah, it's twenty-two, two seventy-three is the additional reduction.
Correct. Yep. And then, of course, there's the reduction that we went through with Health and Human Services, too, so, which is also not reflected.
Oh, my God.
It's just an embarrassment of riches.
This is my problem with, where we've got two hundred.
So, anyway, this, this is our assessment. We don't have a whole lot of wiggle room here, but it, it ends up being very positive this year, and-
Very positive by being-
Either chief want to talk about anything relative to dispatch? Just you're receiving what you need and-
Yeah, I think the, the services are absolutely fantastic. I think that this, this exemplifies the power of creating regional districts. I mean, if you look back through the previous budgets, FY twenty-one, we're at a hundred and ninety-eight, twenty-two, one ninety-nine, twenty-three, it jumped to two thirteen. We're dropping below that because we're able to bring in shared partners who help to diminish our fiscal responsibilities without reducing the services that we receive. So, it's, it's just a wonderful example of how we can, we can partner and save money.
And a fun fact.
Oh.
The FY twenty-four budget, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, is what our budget was when we regionalized.
Oh, isn't that interesting? So, it's gone down that much?
So, no.
Wow. That is a fun fact.
That is a fun fact.
Oftentimes, when people say fun fact, they're not fun.
Honestly, we receive a better service.
She's excellent.
Well, that's what's so great, is the sort of economies of scale that you can do when you regionalize.
The merging of the towns, yeah. Because they're merging, but they're not bringing on more.
All right. Any other questions for our assessments, which we really can't, because I'll get some-
You can be upset about it, but-
It's not what I'm gonna do about it.
Cheryl might know from, or you from representing us on, at the dispatch center. Yeah, we were hoping when we did regionalize, and Cheryl and I were back then, is that, you know, we'd have some economies of scale, which sounds like it's happened. There is some point at which they reach capacity. It sounds like they're not there welcoming other towns.
They are with us now. I was, I'm on, I'm on their negotiating committee.
Okay. So, that was my question, is when, can we keep on bringing in more people?
No. This is the final one. As a matter of fact, there was a, an ask to include Fitchburg, and the, the committee that's made up of the town administrators in the area all were not in favor of that because what would happen is that while it's a win for Fitchburg, it isn't a win for all of us. They would have to hire two additional dispatchers that would basically only work for Fitchburg because of their call volume, and yet we would have to end up paying a portion of that. So, that was, that was not in our favor.
So, this is, this is as good as it gets right now.
That is, this is.
That is, yep. Okay.
All right. Huzzah. You're off the, my seat.
Just before you brought you.
Never mind.
No, 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 it's not. After the record. Your assessment of the electric, financially, saving us money, doing better, too early to tell, what's the answer?
The, the police department has very, very good luck with it, and, and obviously, there is a, a cost savings benefit to having the hybrid vehicles. I believe the, the fire department's assessment may, may not be the same as far as repairs and-
Fuel cost-wise, I, the first year I did it, and it was a save in fuel cost-wise. There's been other issues.
It was supposed to last longer, too. I mean, your maintenance portion is-
So, part of the design, the engine hours, you know, because it shuts down and goes into what I'll call hybrid mode for a lack of-
So, in essence, just how do you think we've made a good decision to go in that direction?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I think you're gonna start seeing more federal and state grants to go all-electric on a lot of the vehicles. I know some that's gonna be very difficult to do, but it'll, and then the maintenance costs will go much lower.
We need electric school buses, which I know is really for the district, but-
But huge federal dollars for that.
I know.
Three hundred and sixty-nine-
I looked in the first community, bought one.
Billion-dollar piece of the-
And it was unreal. They are pretty funny looking.
Yeah. When we, when we sell the chief's five-five-seven liter heavy charger, I'd like to buy that, please. Y'all can have your electric vehicles.
No, but it's good to know.
It's on the record.
It is, and we're on the record saying no. All right.
It'll be on, it'll be on dump deals.
Yeah, exactly. Dump deals. If you get to it first, you're all set, you're up.
Is this?
This, I believe, is page 56.
55, 56.
55.
Oh, whatever, find it. Somewhere in that range.
This number is weird. Look at this number. Oh, this is weird.
It's much different than the support page.
You need to ignore the first page of this. There's something wrong in one of the formulas. So, we'll just talk about the budget, which is, what, 57?
56.
56.
Yeah.
Just go to 56, where FY '25 recommend is 533, 857. For...
Maybe it should.
Uh, page 56...
So, we need to, we need to fix that.
Where the, the variance is 1.73%, yes?
Uh...
Unless it's changed. That's what it is in the book.
That's correct.
Steve, you know the page we're ignoring? Do you have a question? I hope so, mate.
The page we're ignoring?
Yeah, the page we're ignoring.
Oh, we're ignoring it.
Okay.
The formulas aren't right, so ignore them.
It was the, it was the FTE thing?
Still wrong.
Yeah, so, that's, it's fully, it's act like that page never existed.
I mean, it...
So, you're saying the second page is correct?
Yes.
Second page is.
And so, we're off 7499, or it's off 107,000?
It's not off, it's because if you look here, see the bottom? It's taking the ambulance offset, and it shouldn't.
I realize, I realize that's what's happening, but is that in the income side, too?
Yes. It is in the income side, so it should not be part of this total.
So, it should not, it should not be reduced here, is what you're saying?
Correct, yeah. So, the increase here is $7,459.
Okay, all right. Because it didn't make, nothing balanced previously.
Well, that's, yeah.
That other page was a formulaic.
Again, I can't stress this enough, I really would like to have this meeting in January. I know, because it's been every year, but...
So, the bottom line, I'm dealt, or the increase is 7,459 with an increase of 1.94%. That's, that's what we're working off of. Chief, do you have a presentation to give us before we, before we know what we're looking at?
I did not prepare one.
Well, that sounds terrific. You're our favorite...
I'm gonna keep it easy and just thank everybody. And I tend to say in the, I think I've been doing budgets for 12 years now, and the last two, I think, although they seem hard, they've been easy. They're more streamlined. I tend to say that when Kate leaves the room, we look at Cheryl and say, "What the hell she want?"
It's on the record.
Which is nice.
But, you know, honestly, you know, Kate's always been able to answer the phone and help us with the questions. It's a different process than what we used to, and it's actually worked out pretty well. I think it's easier, and it's, your favorite word, more transparent.
I do enjoy that. Thank you, Chief. So, there seem to be, the increases are just personnel costs, and then the reductions are some vehicle maintenance reduction, sorry, vehicle repair of $2,000, there just seems to be some, some small dollars.
So, the major, the major difference here is that we are in year three of an eight-year plan to phase out the majority of the on-call fire, and I can, the chief's narrative talks about this, but effectively, the on-call was very great for smaller communities where people either worked in town or worked in very close proximity to town, and what we're finding is that's not the case anymore. And then farther, what the chief is finding is that when, when people who are volunteer per diem come home from their day job, they're tired, and they don't wanna come out at 10:00 at night. And so, the goal is to have coverage for both the ambulance and fire services 24/7, seven days a week, and that is a very slow move to do it, because the way that the chief and I have talked about phasing that is such that it's either a savings or it's budget-neutral. And so, the idea of doing it over an eight-year means that whatever, when we add another firefighter EMT in any capacity, it has a subsequent reduction to per diem, to overtime, to on-call.
How does training the police force affect that?
Training a police force?
There's something in there about training some of the police.
Okay, hold on, we can, we can get to that in a second, let me just, so, so what you have here, that you can see is the level service is 115, which doesn't account for the additional firefighter EMTs. So, that line is a 3.31% increase, but then there are corresponding decreases to all of the other expenses, so we're under a 2% increase overall. In terms of the drive to keep you alive, I'll let you both talk about that.
It's a fantastic initiative.
It is so great.
Yep, that is something that me and Chief Moody have spoken about, 'cause some of the police officers, and it's mainly at night, like we talked about, the people, guys don't wanna come out, they're, they're working, they're busy, they're traveling. So, if a police officer is available, they can drive the ambulance as a certified first responder, so it allows us to take the call, bill the call, receive the money back to the town.
Yes.
If we call mutual aid, we cannot bill for it. We may have one person show up, we pay that person, but the mutual aid town gets to do the billing, we lose. On average, we're looking at $5 to $6 a call, and you're also looking at a delay in response because that mutual aid ambulance is coming from whoever's got one available.
It is really, we talked about this, I think, in our last meeting. It's a fantastic initiative and shows the, what comes from departments working together to solve, you know, shared problems and challenges for the town, that not just have, deal with response times, but the fiscal impact of that, which is critically important on the billing piece, too. So, we, we actually had...
So, the fiscal, the fiscal impact to that is an increase of about $10,000, which is what we believe we'll be able to recoup that we, we couldn't normally bill without this program.
Right, right. But, and this is a small part, too. Right now, when does an emergency call a policeman goes to, is that correct?
Yeah, the...
The policeman is now a trained, a trained ambulance person and gets to the scene. Who's doing the police work if he's doing the EMT work? I mean, are we short a person because of this?
No.
Chief, I'll take you. So, so the Lancaster Police Department and all police officers in Massachusetts are currently certified as first responders. This program doesn't advocate us going beyond that level of training. The training that we spoke about was training in familiarity with the ambulance, where equipment was, where the lights, sirens, that sort of thing, for us to be able to drive it more safely and efficiently. That was the training we were talking about. Currently, we have four officers, I think, right now, Chief?
Yep.
We have four officers who have completed that training. It's only about a two-hour session. That is well within our current training in staffing budget. In fact, the officers are doing it while they're, while they're on duty.
So, all the services are being fulfilled.
But also, yeah, maybe the point I think that Dick is asking about, if there is a police officer on the scene and there's our police and, police-related responsibilities, that's their primary responsibility, correct? If it's deemed safe from a police perspective to them, hop in the ambulance and drive, they do. They don't forego their actual police responsibilities.
And a big percentage of these calls are to people's houses for a true medical, it's not like a, an accident or a crime, where the police would be, their main focus would be the police work. This is more like...
Someone's house.
Not that we ever hope it happens. Like, if you fell down and needed help and had to go to the hospital, one EMT shows up, the police show up, they could drive the ambulance while we tended to you. If it was like a holdup and someone got hurt, they're gonna stay and do the holdup part while we tend to the, the patient.
But we're, okay, I'll end, end of this conversation.
Any other questions for Chief Hanson about the fire budget?
Always, Steve.
I don't, it's, it's quite all right.
Um, okay, so, thank you, and yes, the last, it's the drive to, what was the initiative?
Drive to keep your life.
Right, yes, you think it's fantastic, unanimously, unanimously supported it, I think everybody's excited about it, so, great job. The question on the budget service payroll is, it looks like...
Which line?
Line 5130. Full-time firefighters recommended is 171, 592, which is up from this year, 110. I'm assuming that means that we're hiring another full-time firefighter, is that?
Yes.
Okay. And Kate spoke to this, about efficiencies and so on, so the per, the call firefighters went down from this year's 125 to 69?
Yes.
So, we, we expect that that would be able to...
Yeah, this is part of the eight-year plan that Kate talks about, about shifting it away from call to...
Call and per diem.
Yeah, per diem has a decrease as well.
Correct. The overtime remains flat, and that's used, what's that used for?
It's for them coming back for calls, training.
So, the training is another, yeah, so, as I, I kind of presented something like this at the select board meeting, so, in both budgets, both police and fire, the training budget was upped for all of them as one of the goals for the senior managers here on the staff. For many years, we hired people and we put them in the job, and then we don't train them to do anything that was new, there's no other initiatives. And so, last year, one of the goals was to increase training, and due to the override need, while we increased it a little bit, it wasn't substantial enough. And so, for police and fire, the idea of training comes into overtime, because what you're doing is you're basically having them come back after their shift. And so, that's why you see, for the police budget, it wasn't as much because they have actual days off, etc. For fire, it's more so because you basically have to call people in, you know, to do the training, and the chief will need to arrange that in either three different camps or four different camps, depending on when people can do it.
Okay.
Yes.
Your variance column, I don't think those are calculated correctly.
Yeah.
So, your variance is not 7,459, I think it's gonna be slightly different. So, like the fire chief's variance is not 2,0871, it should be more like 5,000 or 6,000, if you're looking at fiscal year 24 budget versus recommended 25. And the same thing with, like, the full-time firefighters went up from 110 to 171, so it's not 3,500. It looks like it's comparing the fiscal year level funded versus recommended.
Yeah, that's what it's showing.
So, I think the variance is gonna be quite more significant, but maybe it might come through. Let's just look at it real quick.
Thank you.
Says it's locked for it.
Any other questions for the fire chief? Budget-related questions for the fire chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chief Moody. Thank you, everyone. Just thanks all around. You guys managed, according to our agenda, to do your whole thing in six minutes, so good job.
I was gonna say, 'cause now it's locked.
So, update for the group. Public safety was supposed to start six minutes ago, obviously, they just finished, so that's a big win for us. Next on our schedule is planning at 11:30, and then public works at noon. However, we have, however, we have two sections, finance administration, other, and capital review, that don't require any special guests. So, if it is the, the will of this room, I'd like to ask Kate and Cheryl, whenever they are ready, to tackle those two categories, and then hopefully, that...
Cheryl, this sheet is so...
If we do it right, we can actually break our record from last year and leave before 12:45. You ready for that?
I'm, according to who says, I'm saving a separate copy that says...
I guess I'll wait for Cheryl.
Sorry, there's something...
I can try to give you the answer, but it probably...
All right, got it, yep.
When can we expect the supporting reports such as other income, free cash, you know, all the ones that are down below? Are we gonna be getting all those?
Yes, you will, but normally, I don't put those out until we've done the recap, because that's where all those final numbers come from.
But, but that's, that recap's November, end of November, right?
So, actually, so the labor costs actually went down. The classification hearing, and all.
Because of the interest, I wanna see what's in that, other income.
Yep. Just looking, and it just was like, 125, 119 is not...
Debt terms, debt terms went down 70,000, so, 2 or something.
But if you look at what 24 was, which was five, just on 535, and the new one is like 5339.
Thank you.
Labor costs actually went down, so that's a nice...
You can see that.
It appears that it's somewhere in like the two and...
God for transitions.
It's like the two and a half percent range, but the, but the links are all busted, so I don't wanna give you the wrong...
Right, right, I'm just, I just, for whatever reason, I looked at it real quick, and I was like, that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, 'cause it's, it, just taking the chief's salary alone is like $5,100 or something, so...
Yeah, but if you look at the, if the totals are correct for personnel services, you actually had a decrease.
That's correct, but, but that, that speaks to our eight-year plan, which is that having full-time instead of calling, because what happens is, is that he has to call a group.
Right.
So, he, he has a call, and he calls four people, and three show up, they get a four-hour minimum. You have one person in the office, that's the person that's showing up.
Right.
We're paying them once.
I remember when I first started in the finance committee, we had one firing person, and the guy that drove the ambulance was about 85 years old, and the two ladies that usually were in it are in their 60s.
Yeah.
And they had to call DPW almost every time to come help assist moving patients. Average age. Who is this guy that's driving, he goes, "He looks like he needs to be in the back of the ambulance, not in the front." I don't know, I mean, like, does it, he likes it, he does, I just remember way back, I'm like, "We only have one full-time firefighter, and it's the chief." He wasn't the chief then, actually, I mean, Liam was the chief.
For this, we use 150.
Stand's gotta go. All right, let's do the... Oh, it's waiting, I like noon or something. Could be, I'll buy that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Did you, is, are we in recess?
Oh, I was going to your line. Sorry. Stop, just been doing some research.
You can't say we're gonna beat our record for a lot of time.
I told you, there was a lot of side conversation going on.
Very chatty, water, water, water. Let's go. I'm missing my kid playing at Villanova for this, let's move this along.
Are we gonna do, are we gonna do the capital course?
Pardon?
Are we gonna do, are we gonna do the capital course?
We're gonna do finance, which has risk management, debt.
No, you're asking to do risk management.
I have risk management.
I'm going off of...
No, we are, because where are we? So, do you wanna do something different? I thought we might...
No, no, no.
Okay.
Take it away.
What, what's the page?
Excuse me?
Finance.
Only two?
Perfect.
Okay, unmuted.
What page are we at?
Don't rush me.
I was refreshed.
Just kidding. Um, let's see, I believe we're in the early...
Page, John.
After.
Well, that's ridiculous.
Which, just looking at finance, that should be an easy word search. Document, if you don't want page one.
Uh, 33. Here we are. Right, okay. We're here. Yarn happy about it.
All right.
Okay, so starting with finance operating, the only change that was made is last year, I was given a 20-hour-a-week budget analyst. And that position merged with a 20-hour-a-week department assistant from the treasurer's office and is now a full-time person in my office. So that is the increase. And you'll see a decrease in the treasurer's office for their part-time position.
And the part-time...
I'm sorry.
The part-time person was going to just do forecasting, et cetera. Now the person is doing forecasting, some help for Cheryl and I on the budget in its form, not the numbers, but how it's placed here. And then although that hasn't started yet, hopefully assisting with some procurement because we purchase a lot of things. And for a very long time, people purchased however it was that they felt best rather than having a centralized way of doing that. But now, since 30B has been enacted and the municipal modernization act helps to do joint resource purchasing, including with other communities, we're utilizing all of, all of those.
So the numbers we have in our binder are accurate?
Yes.
Any questions for Cheryl about the finance department operating budget?
So...
Go ahead.
So the half-time person last year has merged with the half-time. And as you explained, there'll be a reduction in the treasurer's department. That's, enters to you. Is that person on and working? Do we expect impact now, this year, or just for next year? That's just coming for, for next year?
It was programmed in 24, in 24, it was programmed in two separate places.
The half-time.
So it's counted for. It's in effect now.
Okay. And they didn't start July 1st and the other full-time position was vacant, therefore we will see a salary savings at the end of this fiscal year.
This just cleans it up and puts it on...
That'll go into free cash, though, so...
Chucks.
Okay, that's sweet. Okay, I think that makes, that makes sense.
Mr. Chair, do you have any questions?
No.
Anybody over here? Cheryl, you are. I'll see it on that one.
No, she's not. Next.
I sit on that one.
Assessor, next.
I will say, I think it's accomplished what I hope for, freeing Cheryl for long-term planning, et cetera. This is what's been needed rather than figuring the type of type planning. And this is good, so.
And it sounds like you're keeping, you're still the chief procurement officer, but there's another procurement officer.
It's the hope. Right now, the person is onbo, still onboarding. I mean, she's more than capable, but she's doing a lot of the things that, primary focus is finance. If and when she tells me that she's bored and would like a few more things to do, I will happily shove it out. So we haven't gotten to that yet, but, but it is a hope.
Okay.
All right, assessor operating budget. Page 35.
Assessor, again, a very large reduction in this because it's reflecting the salary of the old assess, principal assessor who is gone. And we now have a new replacement who is coming in a lower rate, as well as her replacement of the assistant assessor.
That is a reduction of $53,000 and change, yes? An overall total.
And she's excellent.
Of course.
Bobby Joe is amazing.
Yes. All right, any questions on the assessor operating budget? You're cooking with gas, folks.
Has the assessor achieved the full assessor's...
And beyond.
And beyond?
Yes.
Fully certified, what I think was the...
Fully, and beyond.
And that increase is reflected in this.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Question, why did the senior work-off program go from $29,180 to $2,000? Just to move around or something?
Where did the senior work-off program go?
Mine, 51, 102.
Those dollars went?
Oh, we had a separate, I think that was for the administration. We were gonna, were we gonna keep that as separate?
No.
Okay, we gotta look at that.
All right, any other questions for the assessor operating budget? We'll get that flagged and answered for our next meeting. Cheryl, do you have another one?
I have county assessments, which were released by the state. So the new number is 151, 616, which is up $2,600. And we have no control or say over that.
So if you have any comments, reserve them.
That's all right.
Okay.
Now, mosquito controls are not, I thought that was in funding border health or something, but no.
No.
Okay.
You have to pay the, these are, these are things we pay the state.
Or the county, typically.
They provide us $82,000 in mosquito control?
Well, we, we buy it.
We pay for it, yes.
It's like, where?
I know. People think it's free. It's not.
Like MBTA services? Like, I don't see any, do we have any?
No, well, every community in the Commonwealth does assess something.
Gets assessed part of it.
We're a bordering town, too, so we get it.
Is it the town in North Pole fighting that?
Yes.
How are they doing?
Not well, because they don't have a town administrator for the last year.
Also, I don't think well is...
They may.
It's just you look at these assessments and I'm like, "What benefits are we getting out of it?" It's like, $150,000.
Zoning.
Nothing, but really don't feel like there's any, they're not providing any regional transportation that I'm seeing. Like, we got dropped by MART and we had to pick that up.
There is a bus that stops here.
There is.
Who's that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, RTA bus, yeah.
And it's, we get an MBTA assessment if you're a bordering town in the Leominster and Shirley stations.
Trains are nearby.
Yes. But we do have a bus that stops at De Ambrosio like once a day, although they were talking about canceling that. But the regional transit authority, MART, went way up from $21,000 to $31,000.
That went up last year. FY '24.
Yes, it did.
Yeah. Do we know why?
Their assessment changed because of gasoline and staff prices. But that's what they said to us last year, so...
So we'll soon be supporting the $25 billion need to upgrade the MBTA system?
I'm wondering if someone was gonna mention that.
Absolutely.
I didn't want to disappoint you. Okay, I appreciate that, Stanley. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just to make a point, that's 50%, right? 20 to 30?
Uh, 50%, but that was last year.
My point is, which any of our service budgets went up 50%? The answer's zero.
Right. I mean, I feel like we should take that up with the legislature. But yes, I totally agree.
My point I'm making is, right, like, towns are being assessed more cost by the state and yet our budgets are not reflecting that.
No, are we getting additional increase in support?
Well, it's not entirely correct. There are, the, the state, but the state is providing increased funding, but yes. It always could be more, but...
It's not 50%.
It's not 50%, no. But again, that was a conversation we should have had at this table last year because that's when that increase went through, not this year.
Next is debt.
Debt. Thank you for just pushing forward.
Of which we don't have much debt really.
Till...
Then operating budget is page 39.
And debt has decreased.
Decreased by $10,700. Any questions about a decrease? Good.
Yeah, Cheryl, what, what went down?
Our debt expenses.
$10,000, uh, the interest on the Prescott, the both, the two Prescott debts went down.
Yeah, on the next page, lines...
Still have debts on that, uh, D and M.
$6,000, yes.
When is Prescott paid off?
After all, this money goes to...
Yes, no, Bartlet's in 34, Prescott's 35.
Yeah.
And one is in 28.
And paid in 28, yeah. It's in the second call, third call.
$160,000 is paid in 28.
No, it says 20. No, it says 35.
Yes. When should we begin to...
Excluded debt part.
Yeah, excluded debt part.
And then the inside levy.
And then the, the inside levy is the 28.
Okay.
Dan principal is paid off in 34. And elementary principal was paid off, um, a few years ago.
And when should we begin to expect the recently passed approved high school debt to begin to...
That's 27 or...
26, 27. I think it starts in 26 because we have to do the initial borrowing, but we're gonna spread it over several years. Like, I think we have to do it over three years because you had a two-year window.
Which I'd like to say, remember when I said back at the beginning?
You wanted a three...
Could you do it in three stages? Well, no, and now we're doing it in three stages.
Because we have to, because we have the two...
I know!
You have a two-year window to spend, like...
Nobody listens to me nothing but ever.
I listen to you all the time.
But not, you don't want to.
It's different. Entirely different. You just said, "No one listens to me."
But they talk Greek in that whole thing, too.
Right. It's like I said...
Let's not blame the Greeks. Let's not blame the...
I said, like, glaze over.
She starts throwing these terms out and I'm like, "All right." I am completely lost.
I'm not focused on what's behind her. If it's like an elk head or...
Awesome. Any other question about the debt department operating?
She doesn't like her staff person either.
Okay. No, so there's no question about debt department. What's that?
No, great. Finance reserve.
Finance reserve. Finance reserve.
This is the one where they got two protectors.
Yep. This is 50, 40, page 41.
So, there was an increase in expenses of $1,000, which is for minute takers.
Chiefs.
Are we on the wrong?
Finance reserve?
Finance reserve. Oh, okay.
Page 41.
Page 41.
No, you're correct.
There you are. Increase of $1,004.
42.
Oh, that's the expenses.
Yeah.
Well, but I'm going at the...
No, 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 I get you. I just, I was...
And then below that, I have the lease for the fire truck, which is going down $50,000 because we paid off one of them last year.
Well, there we go. Any questions?
Yeah, why, um, why the, so the finance reserve, I understood is something that you kept in case of immediate emergencies, right? That the finance committee could disperse?
No, that's the reserve transfer fund. This is just, you can call this...
Finance department budget?
Call this, well, it isn't, though. So the finance department has it. So it's finance, it's, it's reserve funds that are for things that can't reasonably be budgeted essentially nine months ahead of time, which is where we are now. So comp reserve. So people come and go. You need the ability to be able to pay them. While that's unforeseen, it doesn't take an active town meeting to do it, but it also, then you catch up with the reflection. The same thing with, so the unforeseen and extraordinary is what you're talking about?
Yep.
That's 5780. That's 145. But this entire budget encapsulates all of that, including dues and memberships for the finance committee and minute takers for the finance committee, which are independent from finance administration.
Yeah, that's why I was surprised that...
You have a SLAC board budget?
No, 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 I understand. And I don't disagree with having that item. It was just where it was placed. I thought that would be in a finance committee budget or the administration budget or something like that because I suspect that's an ongoing, well, it is an ongoing expense.
Right. So that's why it's here because it's, it's, we can call it whatever, but it really isn't, you can't call it finance committee because not all of that has to do with the committee. If you'd like to rename it, though, we could. I just, I don't know, I don't know how else Cheryl and I could describe it that...
No, it helps to have the clarification. And how does the transf, the lease for the fire truck, those are how many years? So those are, to me, they're kind of debt-related because they're, they're linked...
Not debt because they're inside the levy. We, we pay for them with the...
Right. They're not excluded, okay.
So my question is on the compensation reserve. Do we actually like fund that and put it in a, in an account? Or is it just a placeholder?
No, it's in an account.
So have we been building up this account? Like, do we...
No, no, close this at year end.
And then it goes to free cash?
Whatever's left in it at the end of the year goes into free cash.
Which is why, so when so many people say, like, well...
Free cash went up.
Free cash went up, which means that you aren't budgeting appropriately. That's not a true statement and in fact totally unfair because...
I agree.
You have to budget for the extreme. And so you have free cash, which is a good thing.
Which is what we always want. Also, just on the variance column, the minute taker needs a number in there.
Actually, all of them do. I just wrote that down.
Fantastic.
The only one that does is four.
But it's, but it is counted, uh, it is counted in the total of the variance.
Yeah.
It just needs the $1,000 moved over there. Any other questions for reserve, finance reserve operating budget?
Oh, I don't understand what it's standing, what, what is the net of that?
Two forty...
It says it went up $1,004.
It's two, it's 247, 184. Last year, it was 246, 180. It went up $1,004.
Where, I see that. Where is the, is the transfer added in?
That's, that's...
That's below that. That's a different account.
That's a different account.
Correct.
So minute takers...
This is what we were discussing before.
We'll do away with that sheet.
Now, what you sent us two units later is another reserve.
Right.
That has now been eliminated and that's not added into the figures.
It's not added in, no.
And the point of, the point of doing it...
That's what we do with that.
Yeah, is trying to reduce, because, because what happens is that if you have it be its own, it's just two extra pieces of paper that we have to copy and bind.
Yeah, yeah.
It was really for another reason. They are too separate. They can't share a sheet, though.
It's gone now.
Cheryl's ripped it out, so I guess it's gone permanently now.
Now, what you sent us two units later is another reserve.
Right.
That has now been eliminated and that's not added into the figures.
It's not added in, no.
And the point of, the point of doing it.
That's what we do with that.
Yeah, is trying to reduce, because, because what happens is that if you have it be its own, it's just two extra pieces of paper that we have to copy and bind.
Yeah, yeah.
It was really for another reason. They are too separate. They can't share a sheet, though.
It's gone now.
Sheriff's ripped it out, so I guess it's gone permanently now.
Okay, and that was my point. It's not, not in the, in the addition, not messing up the addition.
No.
Any other questions? Fantastic. What's next?
IT operating budget.
IT operating budget.
Can you do something about the owl? Not, not, not now.
I see.
I do.
I don't know. Thanks for throwing it out the window.
I.
I mean, it is a problem that I don't even listen to anymore. It's like, wait till I get it the next day on.
We have, um.
That's good to know.
We have someone coming in to do an assessment of our IT everywhere. Because we're having problems with connectivity in the community center. Um, we're having problems with connectivity in, as a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, there's a little, is it gone now?
Maybe we located, tested another area.
Oh, well, there was a box there that would show, basically, it, it's like flat line, and then right before the slackboard meeting starts, it spikes, and then it kicks a whole bunch of people off, depending on the number of people who got on before.
So it's being addressed?
Yes. Um, but separate from this.
How is it being paid for?
Well, right now, we're using this year's budget, where we just say IT upgrades. But I think it's either that we don't have the right equipment, or we need some greater bandwidth that, depending on the cost of that, could be a capital matter for future years. Um, this owl is an interesting thing, because in, when you talk to some people, they say, well, if I turn such and such up and whatever, it's great, and others it isn't. And so I don't know whether it's the room or whether it's a connectivity issue. So we have had to call in someone who does that, like networking, because.
Soup.
I don't know how to fix it.
Isn't this a budget issue?
Right.
I don't mean to sound wise, but don't, we have a.
Like the owl?
Yeah, yeah. We have.
It's two.
I was just saying. Come on, and I got it. Come on with this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Ow. Why, um, the owl is a relatively simple to use thing. We use it at other, I've used it in many other organizations. And you're right, we do have trouble. We all know that we have trouble. Can't we just handle this in IT?
Yes. But we can also handle it not in the budget meeting.
Well, no, 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 no. I thought, no, it has a budget impact, that's what we were talking about.
He is, he's working on it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I just, I want to make sure we, because that, we could literally go down a.
Yeah, it's budget related.
It's the owl.
Because it's supposed to look like one or something like that. And turns, most of the C all the way around.
Turn his head all the way around.
His head's turned and it's very sound sensitive.
Okay.
Also, not a budget question, but I appreciate.
I'm sorry. I get at least one, right?
You get one, that's, you've used it up.
I'm, I'm.
What a lame way to use that.
That's all right.
You should give her a mull.
Stan's, actually.
This was good.
Stan already used his question up, so I took it for him.
Damn, all right. Any questions with the IT operating budget? Or why don't you tell us what it's in it?
So the only thing that I think is important is that, um, this line item here, IT director, um, we're revisiting with, under class and comp, because while that title is fine, it, it insinuates that somehow there's a supervisory capacity.
Right.
And so what we're trying to do is take anything that says director that technically isn't by the letter of the law and move it into a different category. Um, just for, you know, not only for fair labor standard, but for internal equity. Um, so, um, right now, uh, we're, we're, we're working on that. For the rest of it, um, what we did, I think, starting last year, is we, they used to just, we used to just have a line item that said licenses or something, and so it, it was not clear how many different platforms we pay for a license for, so those are all separated here. You can see my senior center, my rec, the dog database, watch guard, log me in, all of that. These things that say software licenses are, it's Microsoft. So, so when you see software licenses, it's software for, uh, staff, but it isn't, it isn't the overarching, um, past perfect is another one that, that does. So those are all here. And the cloud services, um, we have that down, because for whatever reason, it used to be that, um, committees wanted to save the recordings of their meetings, Zoom recordings of their meetings indefinitely, and that isn't necessary, because once we turn them over to the cable studio, they, they have it. So the ability for the town or the, the need for the town to have to purchase additional cloud storage to store recordings that are stored somewhere else at no cost to the town, or, you know, at a minimal cost to the town. So we're, we are storing things for two years. So we have two years' worth of the internal Zoom recordings. And if they get to the two years, we verify that they are with Sterling Lancaster Television, and then we purge them.
So do all, do all the committees turn over to SLCTV?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, uh, that use.
That uses Zoom.
That use Zoom. So the DPW commission is only in person. I'm trying to think, is there any other committee that's only in person? I don't think so.
Uh, reuse.
Oh, Board of Health? No, they've been using Zoom.
Yeah.
Uh, Historical Commission, they don't use Zoom.
Okay.
Yep, so those, so those ones.
Somebody wanted to go get, because I think there's records retention stuff, so somebody wanted to go get a, um, I don't know.
There's also minutes, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but you have to have.
No, you don't have to.
You don't have to. But we do, because we, so as long as you have a Zoom recording.
Yes, and it first. Okay.
I will, I was just curious, uh, mine are for Tyler Technologies assessors, did we not? We didn't have that?
Nope. No, we didn't.
Dick.
So the question, how come printers and backups didn't get transferred to capital if the computer purchased it?
Computer purchase.
That moved to capital.
Oh, because they're leases for copiers. We don't own them.
We don't own them.
Correct. Yeah.
On that line, why do copy or leases go from thirteen thousand or, well, I guess it was twenty-four thousand, and this year it stayed twenty-four thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's just the bump. The bump was from twenty-four.
Yes, to, to the twenty-four budget.
No, I'm not talking leases.
You're talking the computer.
Talking the printer itself.
Oh, I see. Fifty-two, four oh three.
It's only a thousand.
It's the same as last year. Yeah.
Oh, the small printers? Well, because it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be cap, they're just the small desktop printers.
Yeah, anything under five thousand dollars.
No.
It doesn't meet the threshold.
It's five thousand dollars for the threshold, correct, for you guys?
What is the threshold?
Five thousand. So anything over five thousand dollars.
Don't buy printers.
Don't buy printers that's five thousand one.
I have one that's twenty-five years old, an HP eight thousand, and it still works.
My HP's been working for.
I mean, we bought it nineteen ninety-eight, I think, or ninety-nine.
John would love that.
It's my backup, but it still works.
Any other questions for IT?
One's a better.
Hearing none. What's next?
Treasure collector. And this is where you see the reduction of a.
Half-time person.
It's thirty-nine.
Because that's the one that went over to your department with the other.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
I, oh, that's operating budget, sorry. Never mind.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Get it together.
Not listening to you anymore.
I wouldn't. It's your mistake, starting listening.
So Cheryl?
It's on you. Uh, any questions relative to treasure collector operating budget?
Cheryl, the halftime person that went over to you, does that reflect, or is that just a mistake in the FTE? Because you said there was a halftime person that went over.
There was. We never even had them on the original. There's always been, there's been three, we knocked it down to two and a half in twenty-three, and then we took it away, so it never got in there.
Okay, so is there four, four FTEs in the treasure collector's office now?
Two.
Says four on the.
I know, it needs to be fixed.
All right.
Okay, okay.
Fantastic. Any other questions for treasure collector?
Did the original treasurer retire and we hired a new person?
She did.
So that's the step differential.
Yep.
Just answered that question, right, Cheryl? I asked you about what amount was being saved from one to the other on return. Fifteen K.
On this apartment alone.
Fifteen one, really.
Fifteen zero nine four.
Okay.
Has that replacement been completed since we moved up, so that the system?
We, there's not an, I'm meeting the, the candidate, that was the top candidate from the initial screening committee on Monday at four-thirty.
Yes.
For which position?
Assistant treasure collector.
All right. Any other questions on treasure collector?
Although, just so you know, right now, we, sorry, but I feel like it's, I don't want anyone to think that the, we have a temp working in there right now. So we contracted with a temp agency. The person does, I forget how many hours a week, but it's enough that, um, Marcia is able to offload some of the more administrative duties, so that she, she isn't doing all of that. So there is, there's continuity of services.
Work is still being done.
And it isn't on poor Marcia, who's just taken the larger job, so.
Got it? You good? Next?
Not me.
Ah! Huzzah. Now what are we on to?
Uh, administration, slackboard.
Those people. So are we doing slackboard first, that we're saying?
We sure can.
We sure can. That is.
The transfer is out.
I think page six, but.
So remember, those are together now?
That ripped out sheet.
That's done to us.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was just, you selected.
Page five.
Page five.
See? Don't listen to them.
Well, I said five or six. Any que, uh, any narrative behind this? Reduction of fourteen fifty.
For those of us who are doing page numbers, which one are we looking at?
Slackboard operating.
Slackboard operating, okay.
These numbers are.
One.
Um, there's a reduction of fourteen fifty. That represents.
A reduction.
Reduction of historic.
Yeah.
Townwide training and.
What would that?
Select board.
Select.
Select board operating budget request.
Uh, um, account number zero one dash one two three.
Yep.
On page six. With the more detail. Reflecting a fourteen hundred and fifty dollar reduction, which you can see in the column, second column from the right under variances.
And that is because, uh, we are in the process of a grant for the Historical Commission and another one for townwide committee training through Mass Municipal Association for committee trainings, and so therefore, we, that is reflected.
And the conference reduction is?
Um, is because, uh, only one individual, uh, has requested.
Requested to go.
Having, or paid, having the town cover the conference.
Fantastic. Any questions?
What is the twelve hundred dollars for, for the historic?
Um, the five hundred? It's twelve hundred.
Budget.
That's what I said. What is the twelve hundred dollars for, for the historic mission?
Uh, they're operating. I, um, didn't.
Supplies.
Yes, supply.
This is completely separate from what the LIBOR is going to do.
Yes.
So it's, it's not a due protection?
No, no, it's whatever they need for their operation, office supplies.
General.
Yeah. Yep. Um, I didn't get an itemized listing, so I used basically the actuals and then had a, had a conversation with the county co-chairs.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't.
Yep, nope.
So the individual was me, obviously. I, for the training.
Now it's.
Okay, it's all right. Now it isn't. The commissioner of disability went up two hundred and fifty, a small, tiny budget, and everybody seemed to really like the emergency preparedness.
Yes.
That, I know it was not out of budget, that was out of arm.
Yes.
To be clear, because people wondered how it came out of that budget.
It was much more than that.
Yes. Um, the, so I think, I think that's it. And these are all based on the actuals, so Memorial Day and the, all these ones you've covered, their expenses, based on the actuals.
Yes. All right. Any other questions for slackboard operating?
No, well, just that these are not, so that, you said, sorry, but it's just, none of this is based on actuals. This is the zero.
Well, you said the historical.
That's zero base, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, so I, but then a conversation, because their actual is two hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay.
So, so it was based on.
No, well, based, I was thinking, is the zero-based budgeting, is, for example, Memorial Day, I didn't know if they had spent or needed.
They spent more than this. This is, this is the budget that was given, will be given to them. Before that, the actual, they spent sixteen.
In twenty-three.
In twenty-three, but that was over the budget. So we're trying to.
Okay.
Get a better handle on what's being paid for by the town versus by whatever, they have, donations, et cetera.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for slackboard operating? What's next?
Um, uh, we can go to risk management, which is page one.
And I'm already there. Risk management.
So, let's see.
Significant reduction here.
I think so.
Insurance.
Yes.
It is.
Yep.
Risk management.
Uh, so part of the union contracts, um, that were in place, quite a few part-time employees received benefits. Um, that is no longer the case. We have a threshold of what is benefit eligible, which is, um, over twenty hours, and so we don't have a whole lot of employees that are still part-time, which we've already talked about ad nauseam. So, um, there's a corresponding decrease in that.
Two hundred and four thousand, or two hundred and three thousand. And then the other biggest reduction is the Worcester Retirement Assessment. I'm assuming that's because we've had employees retire, um, or fewer retirement eligible.
It's our overall, like, liability.
Excuse me, liability.
And they take into account persons who are going to retire and when.
Got it. Okay, so for an overall.
I'll ask this.
Overall reduction of about two hundred and nine thousand dollars.
So the, um.
Any questions?
Sorry?
You know, I'm sorry, I was focused, I didn't have it in here, but could you explain one more time why that differential, that positive?
For group health insurance?
For the group health, yeah.
So part of it is that we got a better deal, and the other part is that there was a union contract, um, that allowed persons that were not technically full-time to access benefits. And those people have either been moved into full-time positions or have taken positions elsewhere, and so we filled them then with combining double, or, you know, several part-time positions into one, and so there's a corresponding reduction in that.
About a four.
Twenty people.
It's a big number, obviously.
Yeah, there was a.
A group.
Rating for us at our premium renewal, so that helped.
Change of coverage company, wise?
No, we're still with Vaya.
No, the insurance costs were not.
Based on experience.
Like, ours was about two or three percent in my company for our renewal that came through on, we have three different plans that we offer, and it was only two or three percent was minimal. So it sounds like you've dropped probably twenty people off.
Yeah, we've dropped quite a few.
And you're probably having less high-risk cases. Um, yeah.
Or you're getting a younger population.
So, um, see, that's what I didn't want to say from an HR perspective, but I did not say that.
That's why I said less high-risk.
That's why I said they take in the, the total age of persons, so.
At any rate, yes.
I lost. Not for now, because I don't expect it to start at your fingertips, but we've talked about the cost savings, uh, by consolidating part-time and full-time, part-time employees, twenty hours less are not eligible for full health benefits.
But they were.
But they were under the old union contract, which is now gone.
Well, right, we, we've negotiated a new union contract.
Okay. What is the loaded cost, it doesn't have to run out, of, how much does it cost to offer somebody benefits, full-time benefits?
Figure ten percent of the salary. Give or take.
It's benefits or loading?
That's the whole, like, all of it, pay time off.
All for.
Retirement.
It's only ten percent.
Health insurance, yeah, it's about ten.
It's a hundred percent, okay, nice.
So if somebody's making, somebody's making fifty thousand dollars a year, your five thousand dollars covers.
Give or take.
Days off and insurance.
Well, I mean, we pay them for days off, so you don't really, that's sort of zero percent. You're going to pay them anyway. But, yeah, when we talk about like, Medicare workers comp, we don't pay into social security, group health insurance, retiree benefits, and then we have an extra percentage that comes out. Because some of that isn't always paid from the town. Like, there's parts that come out of our check of what we're making that we contribute to retirement. Which I think people think that the town is paying our retirement 100%. We're paying into it, much like people pay into their 401K.
Right.
And then deferred compensation is also paid for from the employee, not the town. So...
What percentage do the employees have to cover for health insurance?
If you were hired before 2017, it's an 80-20 split. After 2017, it's 70.
Seventy, yep.
That's actually pretty good.
It is.
This company is 50-50 right now.
That's true.
Not Kennedy Community Health, which we have a job fair coming up, we are 80-20 split.
The state is 90-10.
No.
Really?
Yes.
If we're paying for retirement, health, and life insurance, what is our OPEB expense? And what is our situation there? What is the OPEB paying for now? I mean, legal and certain, they've got some things with that, but...
And how it works is when somebody retires, they go on to the retiree, like, health insurance. The town pays that retiree health insurance. And on the books, the auditors reduce the OPEB by that amount annually.
The OPEB is a down-the-road type of...
No, it's ongoing.
I know it's ongoing, but they ask you to think of it as a down-the-road.
So, if you look at the Worcester Retirement Assessment, that's what it effectively is. So, we're putting 852,20, we're projecting to put that next year. And that money is what's used to do exactly what you say. The town doesn't pay that right on one-on-one.
Well...
So, we're putting in almost a million.
We're, we're, let me clear my head. You're saying that OPEB is being paid 850, oh, screwed up?
We get an assessment from the retirement.
That's the OPEB number.
Are you looking for the funding of OPEB?
Yeah.
Okay, we have not funded OPEB.
Much.
We were at, fully funded, two years ago, back in '21, I think it was. We have since, people have left, new people have come in. Again, the benefit of younger people. In health insurance, doesn't help you in OPEB because they have a longer lifespan. And so, now I think we owe, I just sent it to you, Stan. I think we're now, we owe another 2 million.
How come, how come we know if we're earning interest and the inflation rate has gone up, which has reduced our...
Because of the change in staffing.
Change in staffing, well, it's not affecting the schools that way, but...
It should.
It's, uh, the state is operating on 5.9% being paid and not asking for anything extra. We're paying in 100% and getting exactly the same thing. The school is paying in 1.6% and getting no additional help. I'm concerned that, I'm not concerned anymore, since we're not making OPEB payment. But I am concerned that down the road, we may have to come up with mullies.
Well, how it should work is when you get fully funded, which we were, at that point in time...
There were only three towns fully funded last year.
We were one of them.
I know, I mean, and to Stan's credit, that was a good thing.
It was. But what you do often is every year, once you're fully funded, you need to put into OPEB. It's 100-something thousand annually.
But that means 360 of our towns are not fully funded. I'm going to get into all the sketches now. But the point is, if we're paying this money, why do we need to be... And if the state is operating at 5.9%, and the school is operating at 1.5%, why do we need to be 100%?
Well, so the philosophical answer to that is, if you are going to work for a community, it is good to know that the benefits that the community is saying that you will be entitled to are funded enough that you know that you will receive them.
Let me give you a, as you probably know, the school is underfunded.
I know.
By 48 million dollars.
So, their gamble, just like ours, is that we are not going to see a slew of retirements in the next however many, you know, in the next fiscal year. That's the gamble that you're taking. Now, for us, if you look at the median age here, are we going to see some retirements? Yes. Are we going to see what I would consider a rash? No. But eventually, we will. Because if you hire people that are in the same age bracket, we're all aging together. And so, therefore, when I'm eligible for retirement, I know that there's at least 13 of the people that are also eligible.
The insurance to cover that?
We should have, so that's a policy decision, though, so.
As, pay-as-you-go type of thing is a policy.
So, the finance committee theoretically with this information could and possibly should make a recommendation that funding OPEB should be part of the annual budget every year. To my knowledge, that hasn't been said.
Now, reduce this insurance here to fund up.
No, it's completely separate.
Why fund it?
Because if everybody...
I know it's a down-the-road thing, and that this, this...
I want to see if we can wrap this piece up in the next, like, minute.
Okay, because this insurance will increase.
If you didn't have your retirement funded, and all of us retired at once, we all said we're done June 30, you would have to come up with the cash to fund, to pay out all the health insurance for all these people that are leaving.
It's a gamble. You're taking a chance that they're not all, that we're not all leaving and retiring. If we leave, that's one thing. If we leave and retire...
Well, he wants to wrap it up another, so let's wrap it up.
We're early in investment returns, Blake.
Right, so right now, the gamble that you're taking is, it's a pretty good one. Right? Because even if all of us left, only a few of us would be eligible for retirement based on the formula. Years of service plus age, right? But as we all age, if we all left at the same time, that's a less sure bet.
Like, pretend if the auditors at the school find nothing wrong with over 48 million dollars. I don't know how you're finding out nothing wrong.
So, here's the thing, I, they're likely going through the formula of age plus years of service and the likelihood that whoever's working there is going to retire from our district.
To wrap it up.
Yes, thank you.
To wrap it up. You will be getting an increase in, in, in school costs. We've made a recommendation, our committee, on how the school board should handle it. And it will be an increase, probably at $25,000 if you want to put it in the back of your hat. From 50 to past 25, it would be 75 total.
One quick assertion here. The town of Lancaster is about 180 degrees better, maybe 350, than what the school is allowing for OPEB retirement. Plan is up?
Without doubt.
Just ridiculous.
Question, Kate, does our OPEB funding level contribute to our bond rating?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes, it does because the reduces our liability.
Oh, it reduces our liability, yeah, I get, but no.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No.
You think a lot?
I think it makes a big difference.
Sorry?
Well done, Mr. Stern.
So, now, does anyone have any actual questions about the risk management operating budget? Perfect, good policy discussion, OPEB, I appreciate that. What's next?
Schools are online. Yeah, well, yeah, the schools, but I'm not sure we are quite prepared for that yet. Other than maybe just a cursory look, that's page three and four.
Yeah, let's just do a quick look at the schools, even though...
So, are we still doing town, are we down the town stuff, fire department?
You said fire department?
No.
Sorry, town, okay, there's more. So, we're holding Minuteman at three and the show at four. And to Dick's point, three and a half is salaries that were negotiated per the contract. And then we have another half a percent for some things that they were going to do related to post-employment benefits. But in speaking with them, their energy savings have come in under what was budgeted last year. So, we're not thinking that it needs to be much more than four, but I, obviously, that's famous last words.
Do you want to take some glance on what it actually is going to come in?
Their savings have come in better.
On non-personnel, yeah, I think.
Okay. I think that's...
I hope so.
So, these are estimates, so they're placeholder numbers. Anyone have any questions with the placeholder numbers?
We can put in a larger one if you want it.
No.
We can still 5.5, but I'm gambling on it.
You think 5.5? Oh, I'll lose it.
I know.
So...
Anyone have any questions?
Yes.
I'm concerned about the, uh, Minuteman at, I'm concerned about Minuteman at 3% since they've been, although it's a large percent, so maybe they can do it. How did we develop, how did we come to that number?
I think, didn't I, um, so, maybe you weren't...
Something in your email.
Maybe you weren't here, but, yeah, it was in the sheet. But basically, it goes by the actuals, and the class of 2026 was the highest actual. But 27 and 28 are lower. So, we took that, and last year, meaning FY '23, the number that we carried, the number that was billed, actually came in less. So, we took that based on the actuals, doing the zero base, and this is what we came up with.
Last year, there was supposed to be 59 students at Minuteman.
27, so that's a class of 27. That's what I said, but it's...
What's it going to now?
I mean, we're not going to know until the acceptance letters go out, but they were projecting that it was going to be...
Has the town appointed new, new Raptor?
There is somebody on that, yep.
There is somebody?
Yes.
Okay, so I can contact them for that information?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Because one student variation, I mean, they're very expensive per student, so...
It's 24,000, give or take.
Right, so if a couple...
All right, any other questions about the projections for our school budget? Okay, what's next, given we have one minute till planning is here and planning is here? So, keep on the schedule and...
You want to do town administrator?
Will that be quick?
I hope so, well, you tell me.
Is that the last one in that section?
No, town clerk and elections.
Town clerk and town, and elections.
Uh, hold on two seconds. Will you take a half an hour? You're not going to take a half an hour, are you?
He's here, let's just have him.
Yeah, we'll go with you.
He's on time.
You're on time. We went further into our agenda and tried to clean some things up.
Building and planning and special services?
Page is planning.
19, well, 19 is inspectional services, which is...
Where we start.
Mike from the basement. Hey!
Yeah, he's on the board. I was like, who the hell is Mike from the basement?
Now you know.
Now you know.
Hi, Mike from the basement.
Just about one of the best guys you'll ever meet, 19. Also the star employee winner of October of 23rd, the inaugural winner of our new program.
You have any presentation you want to talk to us about, or?
I mean, yeah, if anyone has any questions, that means a budget too, which looks like... Pretty much zero percent from last year. The plumbing and gas, the reason that's up, because we changed the fee schedule. But the town's going to plan on getting the same amount of revenues in, so we won't fall short on revenues of that. And, yeah, I think maybe Kate added the administrative assistant position? Or whether that's part of, that's applied to Russ, I'm not sure.
And just so everyone watching on television knows, your name is not actually Mike from the basement. Mike Silva. We want to make sure that we actually...
It's just that we have so many mics, so when he calls...
Well, not the one we hear right now, so we can...
Well, two.
Yeah, but he's already spoken, so, he's just now here for the food. So, any questions for Mike Silva?
I would just like to say, from our perspective, Mike has just tackled quite a bit of things that were going on down in inspections. It's not a knock on how, anything, but it's just, he's incredibly organized, incredibly detailed. And every time somebody calls with a question, they always preface it with how wonderful Mike is. So, it's not, they always say, it's not a reflection on Mike, he is so wonderful. But I have a question, which is great. So, just since you're here, I wanted everybody to know. And so, the administrative assistant, it's not a new position. The administrative assistant has, I think, one-third of their time and two-thirds of their time between planning, the planning and community development, and one-third for building. They're all located in the same office suite. From there, there isn't a lot of expenses, changes to expenses. They're all relatively, actually exactly the same, so.
Okay. Any questions on the inspectional service operating budget?
So, Mike, I echo everybody's appreciation. You're doing a great job. Thank you very much. And everything I've observed, I see. The, and this is probably to you, Kate, the administrative assistant, it says, union 32 hours. So, it's like 10 hours, 10 hours, 10 hours, is that the way, is the 32 H's?
They work 11 hours for Mike, and then the other hours are for community development.
So, that 23,000 is those 11 hours and the rest is in the planning?
Correct.
Okay. And I know that we increased the fees, you just spoke to that, so that's supposed to be revenue neutral. And the rest of that, I think the expenses are pretty self-explanatory, so, thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mike for his report, I'm causing him tabs, a cost, but a minimal one, I hope. Thank you, Mike.
And should we change the FTEs when they update, just to like 1.2 or something, whatever?
No, I was just saying, someone was...
I took care of that, yeah.
Any other questions about the actual budget for that? No? Okay, what's next?
Community development and planning.
Fantastic.
When, when were they scheduled?
They're right now.
Thanks.
Planning is scheduled for right now, but that was very quick, thank you. Planning is scheduled for right now.
It's community planning.
Just planning was scheduled for 11:30.
So, I am answering, I think, the questions for them. As you know, Brian Keating is our planning, our community development and planning director. I believe he's been here six weeks, not even? Like, five weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah, did you think less?
I thought more.
No, it has not been that.
Then I got to have that mic, let's hear it longer too. You guys know.
Um, so, this...
I walked through the basement all the time.
So, let me just share the screen again here.
Pages are on?
17.
I don't think so.
No.
Like, 21?
It's 17.
How is it 17?
17.
I know how to, I know how to...
That was a delightful answer. I enjoyed every bit of it.
Keep going.
Okay, so, for here, we have the planning director, the administrative assistant for ZBA, planning and conservation, and then the assistant planner slash conservation agent. So, interviews for that position will start next week. I actually think they, they too are on Monday and Tuesday. Got a lot of really great qualified applicants for that. So, we're holding the number that would have been what the former, uh...
Person.
Person in that role would have gotten with their step increase. It is likely, much like other, that it'll be less because it's somebody new coming in. But right now, we're, again, holding the worst-case scenario. And there is no overtime needed because the administrative assistant works 32 hours and the other two are salaried exempt positions.
Fantastic.
The rest are general contracted services and assessments from MRPC and other contracted services.
The minute taker goes away because we have the assistant.
Correct, yep, yep.
So, any questions for the community development and planning department operating budget that Kate hasn't already just answered?
So, Kate, question about the upcoming hire. Hopefully, we'll get somebody wonderful, I'm sure we will. Is, the previous conservation agent had gone to 40 hours.
Yeah.
A while ago, and it maintains that full-time status. But it also assumes, I know it kind of picked up the assistant planner. So, how is the time separated between planning, assistant planner, and conservation?
It's about two-thirds conservation, one-third other planning. That is either related only small way or...
Okay.
Any budget questions?
Will 72 really get us a experience?
We will find out. I think we'll find out.
Based on, based on, based on the resumes of the persons who we will, the team will be interviewing Monday and Tuesday. I am confident we will.
Okay, because we don't need any more resume builders or something, or any...
Well, everybody's job is a resume.
Everyone's building a resume, I'll get me wrong, but I want someone who is committed that, if we're in a, in a big situation...
So, let me, let me just preface, okay.
I just wanted to see if we could, because, if you can answer relative to the budget, so that we can, or quickly answer that question. I just don't want to, I want to...
72 will do it, okay.
I totally get your point. You don't want to keep rinse and repeat and cycle through every people.
Which is what I was trying to say, is that that is the municipal market now.
Okay.
And what you will read in my extremely long, and everyone will roll their eyes when they read the transmittal letter for the budget, is there are municipalities are basically at a bidding war for, for people.
That was my point.
And I, we are getting other communities that are contacting our employees weekly to say, you could do this job here and we'll pay you $7,000 more. I had two other communities just call, because I'm only going to talk about my personal situation. You know, so that is happening, and so, will there, will there be something else? That's what happened with the current person, is there was a community closer to home that said, you only have to work four days, not five, and by the way, it's 5,000 more. We're not going to compete with that.
So, to answer your questions...
We're comfortable with it. 945,000 to deal with if we have to.
Okay. Any other questions about the budget? Awesome, what's next?
Oh, well, this is Brian Keating.
We just did your budget. Have some cake or fruit?
Does anybody have any questions?
There are any questions?
This is Brian Keating.
Yeah, I apologize, I was...
You don't need to apologize.
I didn't find what I needed, so I realized, let's just go over.
Brian has been here for...
Yeah, how long have you been here?
Since October 2nd, so a month and a half or something.
All right, so she was on, yeah, she's on six weeks.
I do know who's in the building.
I know, but you seemed uncertain, sorry.
Well, I said five or six, so. Brian has taken on everything, you know, totally, we've overwhelmed him completely. And we're throwing all kinds of stuff at him, so if you have any questions for Brian?
That's a lot of fun, I mean, I gotta admit, yeah, a lot of things, but I haven't really looked at this aspect of the position yet, but departmental budget and whatnot, so I know it's mostly payroll. But, you know, I'm always interested in professional development, and, oh, both myself and staff. So, we have a new conservation officer coming in. We're going to start interviewing on Monday. So, hopefully, we'll have someone in a seat right after Christmas. But, you know, we don't know if, you know, it's a conservation agent slash assistant planner. So, and with our current staff, I think it's always a good idea to keep people current and up-to-date with the latest practices in planning. There's a great series of courses, I'm sure some people may be a bit aware of them. The Citizen Planners Training Cooperative. They're very affordable, very easily accessible, and I think they're a great tool to keep current on those. And so, that's, you know, maybe a couple thousand dollars a year between that and, you know, other courses or new publications or the APA Planning Magazine, the courses. And I think cross-training between the building department, you know, say, building codes, conservation, Woodlands protections act, and the, and the new current, in the, in the, in the, in the planning practices, I think would make for a more efficient office. So, that's my big ask, would be for professional development opportunities or throughout the year. Other than that, I think everything is fine from what I've found. I like the campus, the facilities, everything is great. I like the campus, the facilities, everything is great. And hopefully we can continue on this pathway and not have to look at cutbacks or layoffs.
All right, perfect.
Someday, look at adding new staff, you know, maybe we could use two administrative assistants at some point.
All right, well, yes, one at a time. Quite literally. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
That's my wish list.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Most of the easiest meeting you ever had?
Yeah, that's it.
All right. What's next? Thanks, Brian.
All right.
Have some cake.
Yeah, have some cake and fruit. What's next?
Well, I mean, I wasn't going to say it, but I won't eat it.
What's next? We can go back to, I know, but, well, down here. So let's go back, clean up the other things, and then we can roll right into public works.
Okay. Town administrator.
Town administrator, what page?
Page seven.
Okay. Thank you. All right, town administrator.
So town administrator has, obviously, myself, the executive assistant is receiving an increase in pay on top of, on top of the small structure movement, which folks call the cost of living increase due to the addition of administrative HR duties. So there are quite a few things that we have had to do relative to keeping track of trainings outside of the things that the clerk does that, I guess, that had not been done, frankly. And so we're, we're imparting on that and doing that and also dealing with all the employee evaluations, which for some departments had not happened for the better part of a decade. So handling that. So Kathy has been overseeing that, particularly making sure everybody is passing them in, that they're on time, that we don't have departments keeping personnel files anyplace other than locked in the HR cabinet in the town administrator's office. That's been a real problem, so, so that, that was for that. There is no overtime. There's really no need, as Kathy is the only employee in that office besides me. We're both salaried employees and if and when we have her work hours that are off of the regular schedule, which is usually for town meeting, I always insist that she either take the next day off or come in because that is certainly yeoman's work. So other than that, there aren't a whole lot of changes. The printer slash copier paper, that moved to us from facility, so there is a corresponding decrease. It's increased because we're printing budget books, whereas the budget book was a budget sheet or two. Maybe it was at 11 by 17, but it wasn't 200 and something pages. So that's the difference here, and I'm happy to answer questions. It's pretty straightforward.
What is, if I may, what is HR generalist? Is that someone held in reserve or only if we need them, we pay them?
So, yeah, so, no, good question. I'm sorry, I should have touched on that. So I'm looking, I need, I need help. What a loaded question. Nobody took the bait on that, so thank goodness. But I, I need some assistance, particularly in the HR field, frankly. And I had started my initial budget with the request to have an assistant town administrator, and it just...
Keep talking too much. Says audio, analog audio overload, I'm just saying.
What did it say?
Analog overload, audio overload, they just...
For that?
It's, I didn't think I was being too loud.
You're not.
He's just joking.
It's like a variance for the generalist, the HR generalist. You're going to need a $30,000 increase in the variance.
Yes.
So the idea of that was either to consider having very, I mean, very part-time, couple hours a week, or some other thing that I haven't thought of yet, to help me with union contracts, union grievances, and other personnel matters that are best summed up by just saying people who need to have a conversation. I mean, that's the best way to, sometimes it's a lot of mediation between the manager and the staff to try to see how we can come to a mutual agreement before we get to any type of dispute. And those things take time, and I'm looking for a little bit of help.
No question.
No, I know, but that's, yeah.
Question, is it, is it an employee or is it a contracted position?
I don't know the answer to that yet.
I know a consultant that I think specializes in what you're asking for. So if you need a name, I haven't used her, but we interviewed her at one point, and she's actually writes for like the Boston Globe a lot of times on HR issues and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to paint the picture that it's a, it's a big problem, but it's, it's just, it's diminishing returns when unfortunately that, people, at least in my management, the way I manage, people always take precedent over all of the other things. But what is the problem is that, you know, I mean, we were laughing, but Cheryl and I were then working on some of these budget sheets at 8 o'clock last night. And while that's fine to happen, it's not necessarily sustainable forever. And so to be able to have a place where people can, can talk to another professional who isn't necessarily the town administrator responsible for other things would be helpful. I don't know the answer to that yet because I don't know how well it's going to work, frankly. So I put it in here as a placeholder because there's a lot more I have to do in the background relative to that.
Basically, the town had a conversation agreed, if they needed to hire an expert, they would hire them outside. But what you're saying is you need some help almost on a regular basis, not just on special occasions.
Right. I need, I need help with most of the things that are happening in the office. I put HR generalist, but I'm not even sure that really fits the, the target. So I guess more to come on that, and I put in 30 because I think, I, but I frankly don't know. There'll be more to come on that. I just know that there are things that just never get a chance to be gotten to that are really, really important, as important as staff, and so...
Wasn't questionable.
No, I know, I know, I know. I'm, I'm trying to work out something that I think is reasonable and not an ask for a whole other person and what, because I just, I don't think that that's reasonable, so...
Any other...
Yeah, so to follow up on, on that, so when we went over the budget the first time, sorry, Kathy was, we talked about Kathy's getting roughly 9.41, it says, percent fair and an increase to 83,000 for HR. But that's not, that's more just the administrative calling as opposed to the, this person would be more of a policy or...
So I, I don't know, I don't want to talk, I, I don't know what this person, what this person, I need help. Frankly, I need an assistant town administrator, but this is not, I'm not going to propose that. So I, I need help in a lot of capacities. What, what Kathy has ended up doing as, as the executive assistant in the office is managing the administrative duty of human resources, so...
Okay.
All of the things that come in, like the drug, the random drug test for DPW, those have to be logged. The people taking harassment, sexual harassment training or workplace violence training, those certificates need to be logged. We need to make sure that everybody is doing all of their annual tasks that they need to do a year, and those things were not done in the past, I imagine, because there just wasn't time. And so, but they need to be done, we're legally obligated to do it, and we also need to have documentation of that.
Okay. The deferred compensation and personal use of the car, I'm assuming just reflects back to your contract stuff. That's all in there. That's not separate, that's not Kathy, that's nothing else, right?
That's my contract.
Okay. I think, I think everything else, the expenses are all self-explanatory.
Any other town administrator budget questions? Town clerk? Which can be found on page nine and 10.
10.
On mine, it's nine, 10.
My name is the elections.
I think it's part of us.
Yes. You're right, 11.
It's very similar to your face, which my children use constantly.
We're going to have to cover, we're going to have to cover both. So whichever one you'd like to take first. Let's do town clerk elections first.
You want to do elections?
It's the next one on the book. You put them in there first.
Okay. Elections, so this is up this year because, I'm sorry, I have to go to my cheat sheet here.
Several special elections.
Which is elections on?
10. Whoop, well, nine, I'm sorry, I was in the detail.
It's because there's a presidential primary, a state primary, early voting, special town meeting, annual town meeting.
And there you go.
So there's a couple extra elections.
Couple extra.
Yep.
Questions?
Any questions?
Oh, they're literally written right in the details. She's good that Mandy Cannon will keep her.
I mean, I read them.
Well, I'm, but she wrote them.
Last year, last year is 141,569 for the town clerk and 11,950 for elections. This year, you say it's down to $3,000. Where did the...
Well, we're going to...
How did the combination work out this way? What a mess.
So we just finished elections, so that's, so that's that.
So is, is elections now out of town clerk?
It's always been out of town.
Always been out of town.
Okay, all right. So that's why the setup is different.
That's why it's a separate section. And now we're doing town clerk operating.
But, okay. So dog tags are back again, things like that. I mean, that's the kind of stuff just gets...
That's town clerk.
Town clerk.
So, yeah, so dog tags was in animal, was in animal control.
I know, I know. So there's just little things like that, so we just have to sort out, because under printing, it's, it's...
Under postage.
Five three provides under postage elections.
Right. So I think part of that has to do with census and other things.
Dog tags are not...
It's just detail, it's just details. It's fine, it's just little, it's minor.
Well, we gave Mandy a big plug and now we have to take it away.
She's no getting it.
Detail in there. Town clerk operating, anybody have any questions about that? It is showing a reduction, as Dick pointed out, of 3,423. That appears to be in the personnel services.
There's a big reduction in the assistant clerk.
The person that was the assistant clerk last year is no longer with us, and so we have...
As an employee, there's...
Well, with us, not with the world. And so we have...
You hired somebody for less.
Yeah, we hired someone for less.
Yep. That old chestnut.
But the overtime budget has increased, just so you know, because that person...
Yes, obviously. It's not a salaried position.
Correct. And they are also helping with doing weekend hours and things when we do early voting, et cetera. So that's why it's up because of the number of opportunities there will be for early voting, et cetera.
That's what confuses me, is how they split it, because like, to me, that's election, no, it's like that she's an election official, right?
Right, but, but, but this is the assistant clerk we're talking about.
Right.
So the elections is just for the election workers, so even though, yes, she's doing early voting, we can't classify it as that because it's, it would be overtime for her salary.
Got you. Thank you.
Any further questions on town clerk operating budget? Fantastic. The next one I have is town council, is that...
Yes, I will say that Kevin Ortlet is with us for DPW. Do you want to just do council first?
Just do town council real quick.
Okay. So again, using zero-based, we took the actuals, then we took what we have spent year-to-date and effectively doubled it. A lot of, a lot of open records requests, open meaning law violation requests and things were historically written by council. Frankly, I, I think we have enough templates that Kathy and I have been able to handle those successfully. And so we have a corresponding reduction. And also there was a big spike when, when the town was negotiating the MOUs, et cetera. And so since that, those items have been settled relatively, there's a reduction there.
Fantastic.
Fifty-six, two.
Any questions about the $56,000 reduction in council?
What's our, what's our actual year-to-date right now?
Half of that, not even.
Not half of the fifty-six.
Thirty, it's, it's somewhere in the thirty, what did you just say? You sent it to me yesterday. Thirty-eight thousand?
Or we're only, what, yeah, July?
We're five months in, four months in.
Four months in, yeah.
Five. Yeah. We paid 38, right?
All right. Yes.
So Kate, I realize we're under, do, do we truly believe that we'll end under the...
Yes.
Thirty-four, five, thirty-eight.
Thirty-four, five, thirty-eight is what we're set to date. Which is...
All right.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars less than this time last year.
I'm only halfway laughing, actually, when I say, at this week, I know we're, it's one of the things that I look at, and I understand the need for this, for a town council. I'm a big believer in asking council before doing something incorrectly. However, many other towns are a lot lower than us nearby. Do, do we look at town, an in-house council at this kind of money? Because we're looking at a lot of money here. Is this, is that town...
Do towns have an in-house council?
No, they don't, but they don't have this budget.
I thought you said there was towns nearby that...
Have much lower budget.
Yeah, but I mean, in reality, if our budget comes in lower, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's unpredictable to a point where if you hired somebody, it would be a waste of...
Yeah, I just want to talk about the discussion, because we're looking at, as last year, 200,000, share 158, a lot of money, so I just didn't know if there was...
Yeah, I mean...
You usually don't want to bring that in-house because then you're restricting your access to other resources, legal resources.
Yeah.
You know, somebody's, people have specializations, so...
Specialties that they all have.
You're going to lose.
Hires, what's it called now? Harrington and...
Keep.
Keep, yeah.
So just, we have seven attorneys that we work with that all have different disciplines. So you're not...
You'd lose that.
There isn't one, even if you had a general counsel...
You're not going to get to it.
The general counsel doesn't have the specialties that we need in zoning, land management, personnel, contractual, so...
No, I know, most towns have gone to the bigger firms, like Oklahoma, or the ours and that kind of stuff, but it's just our numbers were creeping up, so it's... Okay.
All right, let's try the...
He thinks she likes you.
I just took off what he hears, too.
Thank, well, thank you. Let's just, before we pick up Kevin, we've got, I think we just have one more in the administrative category, which is town meeting and reports, right? And then we recover DPW and then we are out the door. Yes?
No, capital.
Oh, turn two. Close. Let's do town meeting and reports real quick, then go to DPW and hope he doesn't take 40 minutes.
No rush.
So, town meeting is on page 15, 16, something like that. And there's a reduction of $1,560 that seems to be mostly in the annual report. There's also a reduction, yeah, it seems to be in, it must be in printing warrants.
Right. So we actually are about, maybe in the next couple of months, taking delivery of a larger capacity printing machine that is going to replace an old lease, has the ability to print the warrants in-house...
As well.
As well as printing the budget books and binding them in-house. And the annual town report is just based on printing less. And the reason for that is that when cleaning out some of the areas in the old town hall, we found boxes upon boxes of hundreds of annual town reports that were not distributed. So we're not ordering as many anymore.
Perfect. And a reduction of 9.36%. Any questions about the town meeting and reports?
Are we, are we sending, are we shipping these, mailing these? Is that involved in the cost area?
Yes.
That's it, it says town meeting, postage.
And mail.
And mail.
Yes, yep.
Did you have your hand up? Okay. No further questions. DPW it is. Are you on Zoom?
Yeah. Kevin, can you hear?
Kevin, can you hear us? Kevin, can you hear us?
No.
Hey, guys.
The Department of Public Works is on...
Hi, Kevin.
Page twenty-three, I believe. No, it's the highway safety.
Kevin?
I can hear somebody.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me now, Kevin?
Can you hear me now?
So it says something's wrong with your audio.
Kevin, can you hear us? Well, yeah. Like, can you hear us?
I think it's through Kate's side right now.
She just muted herself, so... Can you hear us now? Kevin, can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Okay, well, we can hear you.
It's okay.
Don't you go ahead with your presentation.
It's just a lot of, uh, it's just a lot deeper on your end.
Totally understand. There's none on your end, so if you could start your presentation, that would be great.
Somebody else have it open?
If Kevin's on. Kevin?
Kevin? Yes?
Can you do your presentation?
So Kate, new years. Yeah, I should be back up.
Breaking them down by cemetery and...
Wow, they're broken out of here, yeah. Kevin?
I've got pictures. Yep.
Which one do you want me to bring up first, Kevin? I can do the screen share.
Yeah, whichever one you have first is fine.
Okay.
Cemetery?
Yeah.
Well, do.
Should be the ending one. You're right.
Oop, I'm sorry.
Click page twenty-one?
Okay, Kevin, page twenty-one, we're here. Can you see this?
Yep, I can.
Take it away.
All right, well, cemetery, um, as you all know, it's still a, a two-man operation, um, taking care of, uh, around forty-two acres of land, uh, between cemeteries, parks, uh, baseball fields, uh, a couple of areas where we can, um, and usually we try to keep up the best we can, um, so, but that's, uh, pretty much just trying to, uh, all the budgets bumping them up a little just for, uh, purpose of, uh, inflation. Everything has gone absolutely crazy with, uh, parks for lawn mowers, all equipment, and such. And just the, uh, the, the contractual, um, rates for, uh, well, the, um, pay.
Right.
At two percent last year.
Any questions for cemetery?
Yes, I don't know if you can hear me.
Kevin, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Hi, Kevin, it's Dick Russell. Uh... Looking at the expenses, uh, tree, tree removal, up a thousand dollars. Uh, is any of that... The initial request at one point was for the middle cemetery, um, tell the southeast corner, twelve foot plus trees, and we got a whole lot of problems with it, which we will now discuss. But is any of that money of the 14,000 earmarked for that portion of the cement, middle cemetery?
No.
Well, see, when that has already been spent on that, unbeknownst to us, um, but that is, if that is for all cemeteries, it's not one particular. That's why tree removal in, in the sets of the cemeteries that we maintain.
Thank you. Any other questions on cemetery? Any other questions on cemetery?
Yes. Um, hey, Kevin, it looks like there is, um, I understand that you were short-staffed in that department, so I don't know where your actuals are coming, but what does the 137,196 buy us as far as labor? It looks like the foreman, the vacant, they say there's a heavy equipment operator, which is...
Two of those.
There's two, there's two guys.
That's what he started.
Oh, okay.
It says, yeah, that's what he said, yeah.
All right, all right, so three, so then we will hopefully replace that and be at three total.
Is that full staff?
Yeah.
Is that full staff? Okay.
All right.
Good, congratulations on that.
Any other questions for cemetery?
Um, no, but they, they are now doing, oh, yes, I guess, Kevin, can you with full staff do, because now I guess you've picked up the solar field or other things, is that right?
No, he didn't pick it up. He traded it for, Scott Muth is doing this campus, rather than spending time taking the mower and going down there. So that's, that's the difference. So they didn't pick up, they're just swatted.
So they're doing, they're, they're not doing their field or here, or any of that stuff?
They do their, still. They do the solar field and the police department. And in lieu of that, Scott Muth does the town green in the area behind the community center.
Okay.
All right. Any other budget questions about cemetery? If not, let's move on to highway safety.
Highway safety. Uh, I see the, uh, that is what we utilize, um, stormwater, catch basins, cleaning, um, light painting, and street sign replacement, um, and materials used for, um, hot patching, cold patching, and such.
You need to update the variance column in this, on, uh...
Yes.
All right, any questions about highway safety? Okay, thank you, Kevin. Let's, next, streetlights, operating budget.
Rather self-expensive.
It's pretty self-expensive.
It's for streetlights.
So, um, strong, like...
It's right there in the name.
It's a Sterling Municipal Light.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And next.
So when we have a, a, a streetlight outage, we call them, and they, they come in, repair it, and, um, they charge us. And, uh, this year, I finally, we finally found what the issue was down on the Sutton's Path, uh, area, down there, all those streetlights, the, the Dallas for the streetlights actually were, um, were bad. I had DMAs going there, uh, and it's still a light wouldn't touch them, because it wasn't on the list. Uh, they are now, and they are all operational.
Fantastic, thank you. Any questions about streetlights?
Yeah, variance column needs to be adjusted.
Yep, yep. Consider that we're doing all of that.
Other formulaic stuff.
You're just going to go through every... All right, I will keep you on the mouth.
So the electricity is going up just a little tiny bit, and that's enough? Is that under the town? Uh, it's not under the town solar, but it's...
The purchase service electricity under the streetlights.
This is, that's what he, it's Sterling. That's what he does. Not us. It's to pay Sterling Municipal Light.
All right, so we pay them, I didn't realize that, okay. I thought we paid the electricity. I mean, I heard him say that, I knew they maintained them.
I heard him say that.
No, 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 I heard they maintained them, but I didn't realize, I thought we had an electric bill. We used to have an electric bill.
We have other streetlights that are town streetlights, but that isn't, that's not...
That's something.
Okay, so just for the new kid here, what streetlights are these that, and not, you don't have to name them all, but we have our own streetlight budget.
Settlers path?
Settlers path for one.
Is that what he was just talking about?
Yeah, he was just talking about settlers' path, which is not government's.
Because my understanding is Sterling maintains all our streetlights, correct?
That's what, yeah, all of them.
Well, there was problems with the paths, they haven't, yeah.
They don't do preventative maintenance.
But the electric that we're looking at here, the eighty-two hundred or something, isn't for all of them. It's just for some.
Kevin, did you hear that question?
Well...
I'm just confused.
I'm sorry.
Kevin, I was just confused, because we have an electric bill for eighty-two hundred, I guess, or, I can't see. Eighty-four hundred for electricity, but they're saying that's not for all the streetlights. That's what I understood. It's just for, I just didn't know the differentiation, differentiation.
You see it right there, Kevin?
Yes.
She, Alex would like to know what streetlights that's for.
It doesn't have to be specific. I just thought that, I thought they were all together.
All right, keep talking over each other, I, I have a hard time.
The general area.
So that's, so we don't get the actual electricity bill for the streetlights. That goes right to the, uh, Selecton's office. Um, but I have a, a list of all the town proved streetlights that, um, that we maintain.
Right, and we don't maintain every streetlight that's on in town necessarily. Because there are some people who contract for a streetlight on their street.
Yeah, a few people pay for their own.
So I think that's...
And then, okay.
A few bucks a month or something like that.
I'll look at that afterwards.
Wait, any other questions for streetlights? Hearing none, what else we ask?
Highway. Highway.
We did highway?
No, the operating, we did the signs, painting.
We did highway safety.
Yeah, so operating.
The operating is twenty-nine.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
So, the highway, you, you ready? I'm sorry.
Yes.
On somebody. So the, the highway operator, um, is half of the DPW superintendent's salary and half of the administrative assistant's salary, uh, which is split between highway and water enterprise. Um, so this consists of, uh, a highway foreman and two heavy equipment operators.
Okay.
And this has the, uh, the overtime wages, uh, out of classification, you know, the foreman paid due to the, uh, duty contract. Um, basically, building supplies, the sewer, sewer bills, uh, electric bills that actually still go to the, the town hall or up to the Selecton's office. Uh, vehicle supplies, you know, maintaining of all the equipment, um, oil, grease, filters, tires.
Anyone have any questions?
We're trying to work in a more, um, more adequate trade, and that'll kind of benefit everybody, uh, that's what, in the future, what we're trying to pursue, I think, here. And we have in here also prison, you know, so when we have, uh, a prison crew, we have, you know, budgeted for that, just in case. I mean, now it's there, firing in between to get a, a prison crew and...
Any questions?
Um, Dick was saying he can't hear, but just, yeah, the...
How, how do you move capital from one year to the other? I don't remember approving tree removal through capital last year. When do we do that?
Tree removal is done in the budget.
Pardon?
It's done in the budget.
Tree removal is...
I know, and it's zero. I call it, I see it's zero.
We've done thirteen thousand in tree removal.
Because you're carrying off a...
Cemetery.
Yeah, cemetery.
Well, that's what it says.
This is highway.
You have a tree removal on here.
And I'm looking at, look, uh, tree removal. That's because your actual capital balance is carryover.
It's not a carryover.
Well, it says it still has funds in it.
It says it still has a balance from FY twenty-four. That's a note.
It doesn't, it doesn't. It closes.
Yeah, it, we just, those notes were why we came up with the number that we came up with. So since, since there was a balance, it seemed like the number that was being carried is greater than what can be spent in a year, so we dropped it. And then we dropped it and had a conversation about what trees are getting removed, theoretically, in FY twenty-five, and the answer to that was the cemetery ones. So that's where the money went.
Okay. Now, what happens if we have an ice storm, a storm or something like that? Where, are you just moving within the, the budget? But, I mean, they will have to be removed.
Like if one comes down or something, you're talking about?
Two years ago, Kevin said that even if we gave him all the money in the world, he didn't have enough people to do the tree work necessary. I don't know if you remember that.
That's why we broke those money.
So, so if, if we, uh, have no plans this year, does that mean we've caught up on all the tree work that, that is considered necessary?
So the art, so capital last year included $25,000 to, to catch up with all of the stuff that needed to be done.
Did we catch up?
Kevin, do you believe that you're caught up?
No, no, not, not with the weather that we've been having, with the, uh, you know, what, uh, two years ago with the drought, this year having with all the, uh, uh, heavy rainfall, it does take a, uh, a toll on, uh, the tree life. Um, so it just, it's basically, when, when you think is, one tree is going good, and then six, eight months later, it could turn for the worst, unfortunately. It's hard to predict, uh, but we are maintaining most, most of the, uh, the hazmat's dead trees, uh, yearly.
I don't want to make a big thing about it, I just wanted to make sure we covered that.
Yeah, thoughts? Any other?
That's what I thought, so there's $20,000 in this fiscal year.
The one we're in right now.
The one we're in right now. So it stands to re, the goal of the $20,000 was to take care of all the ones that have not been done before by the end of this fiscal year, but not to repeat $20,000 a year in perpetuity.
But we always had something in there.
Which is in cemetery for the most time right now. Are you saying you want to add it back? I, I guess we can talk to him about that, but...
No, I, I don't want to, but all I want to know is that if we have one of those ice storms or a tree falls down, unless there are...
So that would be under snow and ice anyway.
Well...
But yes, yes.
The answer to your question is if we have it in something like that, we can take care.
So cemetery has thirteen, those are the plant tree removals. The highway has its own tree account. What is that?
It's twenty thousand for the fiscal year we're in currently.
Twenty thousand. So we have a total of, um, what is it?
It was twelve thousand for...
Thirty-three thousand in tree removal for this year?
Thirty-two thousand, because it was twelve thousand the previous, in the fiscal year we're in for cemetery.
Zero in twenty-five.
Because there's 25,000 in capital.
Right.
All right.
That's what they're referencing.
So I, what I try to do is not have something that we've already budgeted for in capital to have a repeat, because there's no way, even in the greatest of circumstances, that the town can spend that much in a fiscal year that we already have, we've already allocated capital, which does carry over. We just reallocate it.
Which is also the last item we have to consider in this budget meeting.
Um, and so on this side, it sounds like your staffing is where you need to be on highway. It looks like it might have gone down a little bit, but I think that's the readjusting that you were talking about, about the administrative and so on.
So the administrative assistant used to be forty hours there, thirty-two hours, because the assistant treasurer collector is taking up some of the duties that were formerly part of this. And then there's an offset from water and sewer to that. We already did that budget, but...
Okay, so...
So it's point four in this budget and point four in water for the administrative. Kevin is point five in this budget and point five in water.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions about highway department operating?
Yeah.
What is it?
The cleaning. It looks like, now, I thought that was under facilities, but it looks like they have their own cleaning supplies and that kind of stuff. Is that not, is cleaning these buildings out of facilities?
These buildings have always been out of facilities because they have cleaning that's associated with OSHA, so...
So there's that.
Okay, and, yeah, one more. Um, replanting trees. We used to have removal and planting. We've taken down a lot of trees, and we're talking about a lot more. And Lancaster's always been, had, you know, beautiful roads lined with trees, and we just haven't had the money for it. Is that...
Alex allocated last year in capital. We have the money, and we are currently spending it. The alternative is...
That's not in the highway budget. Any other questions on highway department?
That's all planned for us, anytime.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for capital for the highway department operating budget? Okay. Is there anything next for DPW? Okay, is there anything next for DPW?
No, Kevin, thank you.
Snow and ice.
Snow and ice. Oh, well.
That's pretty, yeah.
Snow and ice has to be either the same or more than the year prior.
Cap, we went up seventy-nine hundred dollars.
The fifth thing I thought was that is that soft prices have decreased by six dollars a ton.
Huzzah, okay. Big savings. Thank you, Kevin. Any questions about snow and ice?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
All set.
All set, thank you.
Take care.
You too, be well.
It was fifty thousand, by the way, public shade trees and tree maintenance.
As long as we got money, that's all.
To plant them.
Yes, to plant them.
Not to remove them.
We also have.
Forget that, that's to add, not subtract.
That's excellent, thank you.
It comes long after we plant them. Alright, so just to clarification for the schedule, we now have capital review left. Anything left in finance administration or other?
I think your facilities still.
Facilities still, okay.
That's the last one that I saw.
Yep.
Let's do that. Where is that?
I'm working on it.
I fear we are not going to make it.
We're not meeting our time for one.
You're not. Let's make sure we have budget-specific questions and then maybe we can get through it a little quicker.
Facilities, page twenty-seven?
Sounds right to me.
Okay, so this, the big change here is that we were, oh, hold on, I want to give you the exact numbers. Give me one second, please. We were paying six thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars a month for custodial services at three buildings. And that.
Thousand dollars a month?
Yes, six thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars a month. And we, that was slated to go up an additional one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars a month.
So we got rid of everyone who plays with the.
So we have replaced that with a human being and only kept the police department. So that has cleaning services from fifty-seven to sixteen fifty. And then it has the, the other money that was budgeted from that rolled into a facilities maintenance worker, and so that says replace contracted work for campus, and the campus means this one. So library.
Old Town Hall.
Old Town Hall, Prescott and Community Center.
Perfect. So sixteen-five is to clean the police department.
Yes.
And then.
Keep it clean, right?
And then forty-six thousand is the, is what the union contract salary is for a facilities maintenance worker who will be responsible for the upkeep of the buildings on this campus.
Okay.
So you're still saving about thirteen, fourteen dollars over the course of the year, right?
Well, it was, it was.
Cleaning services?
It was going to be even more than that.
Yeah, 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 because, oh yeah, because of the increase without.
Because it was an additional sixteen seventy-eight. Yeah, it's about thirty-three thousand.
Fantastic. Any other questions for facilities?
And so that takes effect, I'm assuming, the beginning of the new fiscal year?
That's what's recommended in this budget.
Yes, it would, unless the sixteen seventy-eight comes to fruition, then we have to renegotiate the contract of the contracted services, because that would be well over what we budgeted this year.
Do you know how much electricity is so far this year?
Electricity, so.
Ninety-two thousand and now from fifty, and I'm wondering if we get some, nothing to do with the twenty-three actual. Where are we at about now, do we think?
Looks like it's based on actuals.
It's a bunch of the two, I guess you had some figures, how much?
Fourteen thousand.
Where actuals are.
In five months?
Yep.
Fourteen thousand for town.
So we'll come closer to fifty thousand.
We could probably have a corresponding decrease, but I'm nervous to do so.
Just want to know what's considered, that's all, and how we're doing this year.
My concern with that is what happens if the solar field goes offline for a time? So I'd rather carry more and then give it, give it back effectively.
Now, since we're on that, have we got a new repair?
Yes, we are up and good, yep. And actually, the inspection that is to take place quarterly is happening next week, so.
Okay, and we have the alarm system for when it goes down?
Yep, yes, yep.
Alright, any other questions for facilities? That finishes that. Because now, now we have capital, which is not under the FY twenty-five outline PDF, is that right?
Yes.
Does everyone have that? Do, I can see it.
Do we have a printout for capital, or do they?
Nope.
I don't know, I have it here.
It's enormous.
I was going to say, just put it up on the screen.
Too small.
There's no way.
I'm trying to figure out how to edit it in the book such that.
Why don't you, can you top one of those?
Yep, hold on one second, please.
And the sun's coming out just in time.
Sixteen minutes to make our record, so.
Looks great, looks.
Thank you, good. Like it's time.
Sixty-eight minutes to what?
Sixteen minutes to make, to beat our record, or to meet our record. Fifteen to beat.
And we're given how much is not committed, not committed from C.
It's in here.
Is it four hundred and seventy thousand still? She has a slide.
Well, I have it here. So this is the, this is the condensed version, which only deals with funding. Can everybody see this?
I can.
It's on my screen.
I'm cheating.
How's that? A little better? So, these are the recommendations just for this coming fiscal year. So they're broken out into categories, urgent, necessary and desirable, enhance, expand, maintain. And so the idea of going through that was that urgent to maintain, so that generally means something is broken or not working, and without that, we can't fulfill even a level of service budget. So those got priority. Then necessary to maintain, that it would be something that's sort of on its way out, and we're taking a gamble about deferring it. And then the next, which was, was.
Desirable.
No, necessary to enhance was the third kind of priority. Desirable, unfortunately, at this point.
That's nowhere.
Well, it's good to aggregate what is the total need. We're not in a position right now where necessarily we can do that. I will say the one thing that I put in here, which is why we have two, is this desirable to expand. So this amount right here I put in because I was interested, providing both boards would like to pursue this, to develop a, either, or probably a special revenue fund of some type, where we can put money aside on years that we have a free cash balance that allows us to do that for the senior means tested tax exemption program. That, that group is being chaired by Roy Rezak. They are doing, they've met quite a few times, I think Dick, you're on that committee. And while I don't expect, or even, there's no requirement of time, it would be nice if and when we get to the point where we're able to do something like that, that we don't then have to wait a whole nother fiscal year to have an allocation of funding for that. And so it would be, if we put it away in another account that's sort of earmarked for this, we would then, I guess, we would allocate it at the closest town meeting to when we think the legislation will pass. That will give us the ability to make a meaningful impact right after it passes. However, that would be a policy decision for these two boards, so, so the capital total recommendation is one point two eight with that one hundred thousand, or one point one eight without. Now from that, I am asking for two hundred and six from the free cash balance. A hundred of that is for this set aside of a hundred thousand dollars. So if that doesn't come to fruition, then it's a hundred and six for free cash, two hundred and forty thousand from chapter ninety, and then the remaining seven sixty from ARPA, which we have to allocate by the end of this calendar year and spend by the following.
By the end of twenty-four.
We were going to have four.
You said it's seven hundred and something?
Seven sixty, give or take.
But just to clarify, it says here must obligate by twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
Right.
Not this calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry, I mean, yeah, right, and then the one following after that. So a lot of the.
Oh, so we have two years to spend it from once we allocate it?
We have to allocate it.
We have to allocate it by the end of.
We have earmarked for something.
Right, but then we have two years from the allocation.
To spend it, so it's almost the same thing as the borrowing on the school.
Yeah, so this budget, we need to basically.
Obligate.
Obligate it. And so this budget obligates the remainder. And it also allows us to be able to put back everything with the exception of either one hundred and six or two hundred and six thousand into free cash, which I think will be very helpful, particularly for two reasons. One, I think it's very helpful for our own bond rating, because this year, fiscal year twenty-five, we should go out and have that, we should get a rating again. It's been quite a few years, so that's going to be aces to help us. The second point is that if and when we come to a place where we feel like we can offer an underwrite, that's going to be instrumental in getting that done.
Right.
What's anticipated free cash now? If you, I mean, it's supposed to be a million nine ninety-nine, but, because it's million one ninety-nine now.
Right.
And, but there's some anticipation of approval of some amount of money, six hundred thousand or something, said.
Two hundred and six.
Two hundred and six.
Two oh six.
No, that's usage of unspent monies. The seven twenty everyone talks about. That's supposed to, that in theory would be added, would it not?
Close the books, is there?
It does get added, but then they look at what we have for outstanding receivables.
I agree, it's a very complicated thing.
The seven hundred is a fake number.
And I agree it's a fake number. What are you anticipating if it were to, if it were to be approved?
Because, and everybody knows I'm conservative, I'm going to say it'll be around one point three.
I carried one one.
Not after taking out the two hundred?
No.
So you're going to have the nine hundred thousand.
Correct. On top of the stabilization fund that's already in there.
On top of.
The stabilization.
Oh, that's one point eight.
No, that's separate.
I know, so that's what I'm saying. That's why you have cash in the bank.
It's one point one nine nine. She's proposing to use two oh.
Six.
Six. So you're down.
Two oh.
Ninety, ninety something.
Well, yeah, and then I'll say, I'll expect another four to go in.
Okay, alright, that's different than what we did before, but the point is, the, from free cash only, well, it's around two hundred and six is being put to capital.
If we use.
If, if we take the hundred thousand.
Right.
Which I'm opposed to, but we'll discuss that separately.
Yeah, that was right, yeah.
Why stabilize it? You can take it as free cash too, rather than putting it into there. What if it turns out to only be fifty thousand instead of a hundred thousand? Why are we putting an extra fifty thousand into something we can't touch? That's my point.
You're talking about the senior means?
The senior means, yeah.
Oh, because if you don't start now, then it will be an entire another year until you can access those funds to help people.
So it is your estimate that, that a hundred thousand will cover the first year? That's what you're saying?
I mean, you can put in five hundred thousand, I was not going to be conservative. Yes, we would spend.
The work has been done and somehow calculated to be a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I took twenty percent of the folks that are eligible and I, the tax fairness committee has to set the parameters, but I assumed it was going to be something like owner occupied, within ten percent of the median value, having lived here for at least a decade, if not fifteen years, that comes to anywhere, depending on what the rate of return is, I would say forty percent, comes to like a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And not everybody will apply, so that's how I carried hundred.
And that's why I asked the question earlier.
So let me ask a question, so of this, so this is where we stand right now with the capital proposal, right?
So is these all the capital requests, or these are just the ones that were deemed?
No, so let me, let me go to.
These are the ones deemed that really should be earmarked at least.
Well, because the total, the capital on total request was.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
One three nine six one, right?
It was two million eighty-eight six hundred.
So is, as a board, I may have neglected, board member, I may have neglected or missed this, but did we put in, because capital requests specifically, you know, for town things, for example, the town hall is something I've mentioned in the past.
It's in here.
It's in here.
I just haven't.
I sent, I sent the whole thing to you all that has all of the, so the town hall, this is sent on Wednesday.
No.
No, it has two hundred and twenty-five for remediation work, and then an additional hundred and fifty thousand to look at reuse and like a phased renovation plan.
An assessment of some sort.
So anyway, we're going to get a chance, I'm assuming, to look at this and hash this out, because I know you sent this, this is what you sent with the attachments on Wednesday. I have, have not had a chance to look at them yet, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what you want to, I mean, yeah, of course.
We don't have to vote on it today, it's a question.
That will be all the new stuff you said, no? Or, I mean.
Capital? Yes.
Are we approving that capital?
No, 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 no.
What are we doing with it and discussing it?
Just looking at.
Working on and discussing it.
When are we about to approve it?
I think it's when we make.
At the same time we approve the.
I would imagine, yeah.
I mean, I would think you would do it all as one, and then it would be, it'll go to town meeting with the.
Because, I mean, we haven't looked at it prior.
This is just, you've got to understand the rationale behind it.
As you said, this is early.
Yeah, you can't do anything until you receive all of the final numbers, and we really won't have those until probably the first of the year. So I guess the good part of this, or the takeaway, is that we are in a much better position than a year ago. And.
It won't work.
Yeah, well, I think.
I think so.
And I would think, in every way we could, I would think, but.
I think this is the best we've been in for a while.
A long time, yeah.
So, we all have all kinds of information. We're going to have another meeting after we get the numbers in, early part of the year. I thank everybody for participating, thank the chiefs for sticking out to the bitter end with us. I thank everybody online.
Do we need any motions to adjourn?
We're just, I'm just about to get to that. Is there a motion to adjourn the Select?
Motion to adjourn for the finance committee.
On paper, aye, 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 okay. Select boards adjourned, finances adjourned.